Good morning. Want to welcome everyone to the February 7, 2017 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors as we come into session. And thank all who've joined with us this morning. I know it's a very rainy, blustery day out there and certainly we're in for some more as the week progresses. And we'll have an opportunity a little later in the day to get an update from our emergency services coordinator. And some of the folks have been working and tracking the storm and storm damage and the prognosis for the next few days. But thanks for being here and hopefully everybody had a safe drive in and we certainly would hope you have safe travels for the rest of the day. With that then, I would just ask our clerk to call or roll, establish a quorum and make a few brief announcements. And then we'll do the pledge of allegiance and jump right in.
Okay. Good morning Supervisors. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, February 10 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please take a moment to silence your electronic devices.
Okay. And with that, could Supervisor Frost lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with that then, I would just note, I do have one speaker form. But if others are here, we should address items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. Please fill out one of these and get it to our clerk, go up to one of the members of the clerk's staff and we'll call upon you at the appropriate time. I know we have a fairly lengthy consent calendar. I think some items coming off this morning, some continuances and some speakers as well. So with that Flo, I'll turn to you to help us at least with the first part of that.
Okay. Thank you. For your consent matters, items 1 through 38. For item number five, you are adopting an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.25 of the Sacramento County Code, relating to the Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board. You waived reading on this on January the 24th. For item number 25, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency. I do need a motion to continue this to February the 28th. And this would be authorize the execution of the First Amendment to the Master Inter-Agency Project Agreement to transfer, allocate, and expand all unobligated bond proceeds pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34191.4.
Okay. I had a request to speak. Sue, did you have a request?
A couple of consent items.
Okay. Just a moment.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. So I didn't know if you wanted to speak to that. So on item 25, I would move that we continue it to February 28th. And would suggest that we keep it on, put it as a separate matter so that we may allow for some discussion by board members. So that would be my request. Or time, time might matter however you want to handle it.
Okay.
Okay. That's the motion to continue.
Second.
Okay. Move in second to continue item 25. Please vote.
Unanimous vote and let the record reflect that Supervisor Susan Peters recused herself.
Okay.
For item 26, we're back as the Board of Supervisors. I do need a motion to continue this to February 28th. It's the Maple Lane Boundary Line Adjustment.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to continue.
Okay. Move in second to continue item 26. If nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And Supervisor Natoli, that concludes my notes from the clerks.
Okay. All right. We're going to turn to Supervisors and start to my right. Supervisor Frost punched up. We'll come this way. So Sue, items you wanted to address or pull off?
I just wanted to pull items 5 and 12 from consent.
Okay. Please note items 5 and 12, pull those from consent. Anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. We'll come back to those in a moment. All right. Susie?
No.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Patrick? Okay. Mr. Serna? Me? Okay. And I did want to, for discussion purposes, item 33, we had some language that was just circulated on that. So if we can hold that item as well for discussion to keep it on consent, but do need to add some comments to that. All right.
That's 33?
33, yes. So we have items 5, 12, and 33. And we do have speakers on items 16 and item 18. So maybe we ought to just go, just go down the, starting with the lowest number first, working to the highest number. Okay?
All right. So starting with item 5, it's the adoption of the ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.25 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board.
Okay. I know Supervisor Frost had asked to pull this. I would just note and certainly give her opportunity. But I have chatted with the county executive this morning and we have received correspondence between the last meeting. And I know we have our undersheriff here, but I would suggest it might be wise in light of the correspondence to consider continuing this until I think March 7, I think would be the potential date.
That was what I was going to propose. So move to continue it.
Second.
Okay. So moving second to continue it. Nab, did you want to weigh in, any other board members as well?
What we will do during this time is have another meeting with the sheriff. And I will also invite any board member to join me in having a conversation with him.
Any two board members that join you.
Two board members. Yeah, two.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I think it sounded like Susan and Patrick. And then you'll keep the rest of us informed.
We, I will.
If nothing else, you could have two meetings or three meetings, two, two, and one, and take us over there different times. So, okay. With that then, that's the motion is to continue that. We ought to set that for a time or you want to leave it on consent? Did you want to?
We can leave it on consent. I'm optimistic.
All right. We'll leave it on consent. Okay. All right. So anyone wish to address item 5?
I'm not sure I understood.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We're going to continue it.
Okay.
March 7. And then I believe Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Kennedy, when we have Mr. Gill and the sheriff between now and the 7th.
All right. I got confused when he said leave it on consent. I'm sorry.
Yeah. But we bring it back on, bring it back on consent.
I'm good.
That, that, okay. Got it. All right. That's the motion then is to hold over item 5 to March 7th and have it remain a consent and see if we can work through the differences on this item. So, all right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item.
Next item, I believe is item 12. It's the authority to enter into a retroactive 22-month revenue agreement with the California Department of Public Health.
Okay. Ms. Frost?
So, yes, I just did, one of the questions that I had asked the staff was relating to the, this proposal to ask for this funding. And the funding includes a comprehensive program that includes do no harm. And I understand that the county does not have a policy relating to needle exchange. But I think this is an issue that's of great public interest. And I, the question that I have is if we submit for this money, is there a condition that the money be spent on the do no harm needle exchange or needle give out programs? And if so, I think before going after that money, we should have a discussion about that in a public way that allows the public to have a voice and be a part of that conversation.
You've heard the comments, Mr. Gill.
Yeah. Supervisor Frost, Paul Lake, there is no requirement for the use of these funds for the needle exchange program. It's really to provide support services, medical services, nutrition, education, that sort of thing. So it's not tied to, there are no, no conditions on that to support any kind of needle exchange.
We can design how we want to use the money if we get the funding.
Well, there are certain things that it's intended for, but needle exchange is not one of them. It's for nutrition, education, medical services, that sort of thing.
Okay.
And it's an allocation from the state. It's not, it's not even something we had to apply for. It's just an increased allocation for this program.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I?
Yes, Ms. Serna.
Sure. So I'm just curious, Supervisor Frost has a concern that it would somehow require needle exchange? Or is the concern that it does not?
I, you know, I don't have a position. I'm not saying I would support or oppose needle exchange. I think what I'm saying is this is something, this is a topic of interest to my constituents. And I think I don't, I wouldn't want to approach it, you know, in a way that they didn't have a chance to have a voice if we were going to go down that road. I've heard some compelling arguments on both sides. I've also heard, I've begun to read some of the studies on programs in San Diego and other places where they've been using the needle exchange, some with success and some, some have had some real challenges. And so I just was thinking, if it is, oftentimes, it seems like in government, oftentimes, if you get the money, there's a condition attached to it. I just wanted to confirm, is that a condition that's attached to it? Because if it is, I think we should have a public discussion before going after the money.
I would, in light of Supervisor Frost's, I think reasonable line of inquiry, and I know we need to stay in the bounds of what's been noticed today. But I would suggest that our county executive perhaps work with Supervisor Frost and myself to find out if there's any merit in having at least a public workshop to do exactly what Supervisor Frost has, I think, suggested, which is let's have a, you know, it might be worthwhile to have a public discussion about it, not with any action intended, but just to educate ourselves and the public.
I think that's a great idea.
Will do.
Thank you.
I would, would note just for Supervisor Frost, but again, for those in the audience too, that this board certainly, over my years as a member of the board, on at least two occasions, but it wasn't just two times, but it was over a period of many months and including litigation back in the mid 90s that related to whether or not it was lawful at that time, under state law, and to put in place a needle exchange program. And then again, in the early 2000s, where we did go out to our city colleagues. And certainly these chambers were full of folks, both in support of and opposition to that approach. And only this board on, in both occasions, on split votes, chose not to do that. There are needle exchange programs that are not under the guise of the county that are certainly, we understand are in place, but they're not sanctioned by the county. That's an issue that, you know, has a lot of, both the emotion as well as obviously, I think, findings behind it that people will advocate and/or oppose. And so in the event we have that workshop, I know the Public Health Advisory Board has sent communications here in recent months expressing at least on behalf of some of the members of that body, their interest in having the board consider this. So I would just advise if we're going to workshop or otherwise, we need to allot sufficient time. Because this is an issue that for a variety of reasons, both public health, but also I think people's views on what, what may be a part of any program that were sanctioned by county brings and associated impacts, both positive as well as potentially negative. So I just would, would suggest that if we're going to do this now, that, you know, working with our clerk and certainly through the chair, that we allow sufficient time. Because I trust this will be an item that will engender a lot of conversation. And that's mine.
And I certainly appreciate the chair's suggestion that we have enough time to engage fully and understand, especially the history, which I think is very important. I would say though, it's probably a very apropos point in time for this board to, to at least become educated on kind of the current status of needle exchange policy. There's been some time that's passed. This board obviously has some new members since that discussion was last had in a public setting. So I think it's probably the right time and certainly unfortunately, since the board has last considered that, we've also had some pretty dramatic changes in trends in terms of needle use for various substances. So I think all, all signs point to this being an issue that has, you know, clearly surfaced, at least in my opinion, and is ripe for, for us to at least hear from experts and hear from our own health department and behavioral health folks about, just to be up to speed if nothing else.
I'd also like to request that the discussion not just be to needle exchange, but maybe to the, the topic of drug addiction. Because, you know, my background is a nurse. It's not just about the needles. It's where are you going to spend your money? And addiction is much bigger than the needles.
We're actually going to have some of that today.
A little later, it is an item on the agenda, a little later, to your point.
So, thank you.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you for that. Then any other questions on item 12? All right. We'll leave you on the consent calendar. Next item?
Do we want to call the?
We have a speaker. Yeah. We have a speaker on item.
16 and 18.
16, yes.
So item 16, authorization to enter into agreements with nonprofits for paid student internships.
Okay. Supervisor Frost, did you have a question on this one? No, that was from the last one.
Well, I have a comment. Just, well, actually, no. No, I'm good.
All right. Well, maybe, we do have a speaker on this and maybe we can, we have staff here that could address this in the event that we need to. I guess you're it Nab.
I do not see staff.
Okay.
If you take the testimony.
Yeah, I will. Yeah. April Parrish, April's here. I know has been a strong partner. Come on, come forward April. That's some of our workforce development efforts in this community and affiliate with the university, Sac State. So, good morning.
Good morning, all of you. My name is April Parrish. I am the Workforce Development Director for a unique program that's based at Sac State. Our program is called the California Intern Network. And I wanted to just say a thank you to all of you for approving this contract. I've been working at it for a while with the staff. Didn't know it was finalized. But here this morning again to say thank you and how excited we are to work with everybody in all the divisions of the county to provide workforce development initiatives. I'm hoping we can keep track of some great analytics to prove the success of it as far as future hires into civic service. So just thank you.
Good. Well, thank you April. And I know you visited with me about three years ago, at least when we were, you know, talking about some of the efforts. And it's taken a while to get to this juncture. And noting that, and certainly discussions certainly across the street. I know that the mayor certainly has been, you know, making it known and his interest in certainly seeing additional internships. And I, we have some, you know, great programs in place. I think the partnership with the county certainly via this and being able to track it and encourage folks, young professionals, but to others who want to be in the trades and so forth, and get them exposed to, you know, local government and the opportunities for both, you know, jobs, but also for contributions to our community welfare and, and just the general makeup of our community. So I want to thank you for, for your efforts and certainly the university, Sac State for its work. So.
Well, good. Thank you. We're looking forward to it.
Okay. Good. I guess you're off the hook Nab. It was a positive comment. So you're good. Okay. All right. Thank you April. All right. Next item is item 18. We have a speaker on?
Yes. Item 18, Salary Resolution Amendments and Amendments to the Conflict of Interest Code for the period ending February 2017, including establishment of the new class of Airport Safety Management System Manager and corresponding salary.
Okay. On this item then, I have Kelsey Johnson. Kelsey, you signed up? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Kelsey Johnson, President of the Sacramento County Management Association, SKEMA. On behalf of SKEMA, I would like to thank the county for the timely and collaborative manner in which they handled the issues raised on this item. SKEMA had hoped a similar approach would be taken regarding the salary amendment for our attorneys, but unfortunately that has not been the case. SKEMA understands that you may be meeting in closed session today to discuss the salary adjustment and hopes an agreement consistent with the fact-finder's decision is reached. If no agreement is reached today, I request the board schedule the legally required public hearing on the matter for your next regular meeting on February 28, 2017. Thank you again for your time and your thoughtful consideration.
Good. Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
I know you have members of your unit here as well as others who'd be affected. So thank you for your, your work on that. And I do believe that is a closed session item for the board today. So we'll see where that takes us. So.
Excellent. Thank you. We look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for all for being here too. Okay. No other comments on item 18? All these folks were here for that item. So.
Are you ready for 33? Item 33?
Yes, item 33.
Okay. Item 33, authorize the Director of Water Resources to apply for grant funding retroactively and to accept funding from the California Department of Water Resources Small Communities Flood Risk Reduction Grant Program.
Okay. Thank you Flo. We should be brief on this. I, I know we continued this item two weeks ago. And I had a chance, I think, and maybe others as well, to talk with Michael Peterson about the grant terms and conditions. And certainly we would be, by the action today, would be a today, would be affirming the grant applications and allowing the work to proceed. I would just say that I raised the issue two weeks ago, as it related to kind of what was going to be the outcome of the information and how that might affect, I think, the Delta communities and the people who live and work there, and because some of the alternatives that are put forth in general terms, whether they be setback levees, or raising structures, or ring levees, it's not like those are new topics as it relates to flood protection and higher levels of flood protection. And, you know, I think, depending upon the circumstances, those can be implemented in a way that provides greater level of safety and protection for communities, but doesn't have a negative effect as it relates to the layout of both the towns, but also the daily lives of the folks that, you know, live in those communities. And I would just say, as the grant proposals themselves would allow us to look at both the Hood and Point Pleasant communities, Corlin Lock and Walnut Grove, both the east and west sides, along with the community of Ride down in the Sacramento portion of the Delta, and that, the unique thing, I would just want to make this note for the record, is that many of those communities are built right on the levees. Those towns, when they were built and constructed, and have existed that way, in some cases for, you know, well over 100 years, and that, when you talk about some of these alternatives, they really, from a practical standpoint, don't fit with what would actually occur on the ground. And so, therefore, I just want to make sure it's very clear, we have some adopted Delta principles that relate to protecting communities, but certainly protecting the integrity of the towns themselves and the daily life that goes down there, whether it be just the normal activities, but certainly agriculture and recreation are big. And so, wanted to note that, and that by way of accepting this money, that somehow we don't back ourselves into a corner, whether it relates to the state and some of the actions they've contemplated, both California water fix, but also levels of flood protection for areas that are less populated than some of our urban communities, like Sacramento, or Natomas, or the pocket areas, or areas along the American River, and so forth. And so, I had asked Michael Peterson to get some additional language for our resolution. Michael, if I could call you forward, and I think you circulated to the board, and maybe we could read into the record, and then we can include this on our consent calendar. Any comments you want to add as well, because I know I've shared concerns as well.
Certainly. Good morning, Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. As we've discussed, and as we had this item continued from two weeks ago, there is a certain amount of uncertainty proceeding forward with the grant program as proposed. We wanted to make sure that by adding the proposed language into the resolution, that the underlying premise and the intent for the county to participate in this program goes back to those adopted Delta policies and principles. The key thing is that our effort will be to identify projects, working with the community and with the reclamation districts, that not only provide additional flood protection, but support the overall viability and sustainability of those communities as a place, not just that you're seeking the biggest project that you can get, regardless of what those impacts might be on the ground. That's the key intent. So, adding the language, there's an additional paragraph in the preamble. Whereas, any recommended actions developed as a result of participation in this grant program should support and align with the County of Sacramento, Delta-centric policies adopted November 18th, 2008, and related Delta principles. That's simply to emphasize the perspective of the county in terms of moving forward with this program. And as we meet with the state, and as we meet with the community, that that is the underlying premise.
Okay. Could you, if we include this this morning, also attach as a part of, to this report and to the resolution, those principles?
Absolutely.
So, there's no confusion about what we're referencing, and, you know, and what this board, on behalf of the folks we represent, but certainly in our engagement on Delta-related issues, and certainly flood protection being a part of that, but also protection of the, you know, vitality of those communities going forward, that clearly those principles are referenced beyond this in the language here.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's all I had. Any other comments by board members on this item? Okay, those were the items that we had before us, the consent calendar, then, with the exception of those items being continued. I had no other speakers on consent matters. I do have one on item 43, but that's an item we'll get to in a moment, so. All right. Then, motion would be in order for the balance of the consent calendar?
Some move.
And I would take that, that would include the language that's suggested by Mr. Peterson for item 33. Okay. All right. If nothing else, please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters did recuse herself from item five.
No.
On the consent?
Twenty-five.
Twenty, I'm sorry.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
It's out of twenty-five.
And it's Susan. Susan Peters, twenty-five.
Right. I'm sorry, that's what I said, but I had the wrong item number.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Thank you for correcting me.
All right.
Oh, you can always count on it, Flo.
Okay.
Okay.
So, for item 39, it's a service award for David Constant, 30 years with probation.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Marlon Yarber, Assistant Chief, here to do the presentation, but our honoree is yet to arrive, so.
Okay. We can hold for, sure, we'll do that, and I know what the...
Come back.
Yeah, the weather today, so we'll come back to that one, so.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, because we've got some other presentation, too, so.
Okay. Item 40, Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming February 26th, 2017 as Spay Day 2017 in Sacramento County.
All right. And I would call forward our recipients for this one.
Anyone here on Spay Day?
Traffic is really bad.
The rain has taken a toll.
There we go. Okay.
Hi, are you?
Yeah, how are you?
She's asking her woman.
Yeah, we're doing all right.
Right now.
Jillian?
Jillian.
Jillian, Jillian, okay.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Join me here at the, I'm going to let you say some, tell us a little more about it, Jillian, in just a moment, but I know that the county, over the past several years, in fact, going back probably, what, 16 or 17 years now?
Mm-hmm.
Has, in one way or the other, supported the efforts of the Sacramento Area Animal Coalition in proclaiming Spay Day, and certainly offering support in a variety of ways, both through the shelter system, but also in working with this organization and many others to encourage folks to spay neuter animals, but also to provide that access that sometimes is very difficult because of financial means for owners and guardians of the animals. And so, this year, February 26th is the big day, and I think your goal, and I'll let you say it in a moment, but I know that we, many hundreds of animals are targeted, and I think the word gets out to them, so some of them, they try to hide in a corner, but mom and dad make sure that they get to the, to their appointments at the duly-appointed time. But in all seriousness, we know that, both in the shelter system, and certainly with our animal rescue organizations, that, you know, the numbers of unwanted animals certainly continue to number, many thousands of them, certainly in Yolo and Sacramento Counties, and that efforts are made certainly to reduce the flow into the shelters, but also to help, I think, pet owners realize that it's a responsible thing to do, and that if they choose to do it, and if finances are difficulty, that this day at least is one opportunity amongst many throughout the course of a year, that affords folks that opportunity to participate. And so, in addition to that, though, both the spay neuter, but also then providing vaccinations and microchipping for the animals to help with their return, should they be lost, or run away in days like this, when it's stormy and fences blow down and so forth. And so, we want to certainly commend the leadership that Jillian and many of the folks with the Sacramento Area Animal Coalition, maybe you can tell us about some of the groups that are involved, but I know our Director of Animal Care, Dave Dickinson, working certainly with GNF and the city, and with the SPCA, and those in Yolo County, there's a variety of folks in the public and private system, but also veterinarians, who step up to assist in many ways, and really mobilize a lot of folks. And if you have the opportunity, certainly, not necessarily to see the surgeries, but to see the, how they check animals in, and throughout the course of a day. I know, a few years ago, a chance to visit, it was just, it was almost a production line, that, you know, the animals come in, the carriers, and owners are a little apprehensive at times, and they, by the end of the day, though, they've all recovered and returned to their homes. And again, this community is better off in lots of ways. So, we are proclaiming February 26th, 2017 as Spay Day in Sacramento County, and we want to extend best wishes to all the folks, and good luck to all the folks that have put this together, and we trust it'll be a successful and impactful event for both pets and people here in Sacramento County. So, Jillian, before I present this to you, let you make a few comments, and...
Thank you. I don't know how to talk that. You should be our regular spokesperson.
He is.
I think he is.
He's, in fact, the grand marshal.
We really appreciate that. Yeah, as Supervisor Natoli stated, we are an all-volunteer nonprofit, so practically 100% of all donations go directly to low-cost spay and neuters for Sacramento and Yolo Counties. And we were founded in 1999, our first spay and neuter, Spay Day was in 2000, and since then, we've spayed and neutered and provided vaccines and other additional medical care to over 30,000 animals, and that's countless lives that have been saved, obviously. And this year, we hope to spay and neuter, just in that single day, 1,000 animals, and we've partnered with over 30 vets and nonprofit organizations, the counties, and the city to make sure that happens. And shameless plug, our fundraising goal is $10,000 this year.
Give us a website.
SacAnimal.org.
Okay, so if you want to contribute or participate in one of those...
Yeah, we would love your participation in any way.
Okay, so SacAnimal.org, and the, and just one other item. So, during that day, what time do you start, and what time does it usually end?
Oh, my gosh. It's like a 16-hour day. It starts at like 6:00 a.m., where we set up camps at every single one of the vet offices, and we wait outside with our tables and our clipboards, and we check everybody in, we babysit all the animals until the clinics open, we shepherd each of the animals in and out of every single one of the clinics. Obviously, some are a lot more involved than others, like the county, but yeah, we, all of our volunteers roll our sleeves up and work all day to get the animals all in and out safely and fixed.
Very good. Well, again, we hope it's going to be a good weather day on February 26th, but whatever regards to the weather, we know it'll be, again, a good day and an important event in this community, and one where we come together to, again, to support our pets and our people in this community, so.
We're so grateful for your support.
And thank you. And so with that, Jillian, proclamation approved by the board this morning, proclaiming February 26th, 2017 as Spay Day in Sacramento County, so.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
A picture?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good luck to you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Are we ready for the next, okay. Item 41, Presentation of Resolution Celebrating the 160th Anniversary of the Sacramento Bee.
Oh, yeah, there's Cheryl, right there. Okay, I was looking, looking for her. Good morning, Cheryl.
Good morning.
How are you?
Well.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Well, we're very pleased to have Cheryl Dale with us this morning, and President and Publisher of Sacramento Bee. And I don't know if you have any other folks that are with you, or just you're on your own?
Just me.
Okay, so we...
They don't travel with me.
Well, well-represented this morning. The resolution, trying to boil down 160 years of anything into, you know, half a dozen or 10, whereas, doesn't really do it justice. And so, I'm going to allow Cheryl, Cheryl in a moment, maybe to take just a few moments and talk about, you know, some of the history, but I think to the point here in celebrating this, that to have a daily publication that for 160 years, and I think February 3rd was actually the date, that was 160, to think that, have never missed a publication date, no matter what the circumstance, and whether there was flooding, or there was war, or there was some other event, and then to report the news, certainly as it relates to this community and all the things that are going on, but also national and international news, and to do that for 160 years is just a tremendous, tremendous, I think, accomplishment, and talks about, to the perseverance, but I think the commitment that was made when the Bee was first established. And it's kind of interesting that, as mentioned in the resolution, that when the Bee was first published, and the tagline was that this would be a newspaper with, quote, "Not only independence, but permanence." And I think, over the years, certainly the Sacramento Bee, through its leadership, and certainly the work of all the folks that support, whether it was the reporting, or the editing, publication, distribution, you know, advertising, and all the things to go with, the activities of putting out a daily publication, and obviously now with the online activities, you know, not just permanence, but almost instantaneous reporting of news, the Bee certainly has met that multiple times over. And I would just also note that the publishers also, at the time, and I think have continued, that they would ensure, again, to quote, that they'd meet the needs of the community, that would meet the needs of the community without becoming subservient to the whims of public opinion or the pressures of the powerful. And again, that's quite a challenge, but I think the Going to Bee has very admirably stood up to that and been a voice, certainly one that has provided not only news, but also, obviously, in pages at which things appear, opinions, the opinions not only of their leadership, but guest columnists, and certainly a lot of folks who read that publication and write on a daily basis, to let their views be known. Just note, too, that throughout the years, they've achieved many recognitions, both nationally and internationally, Pulitzer Prizes, certainly most recently, last year, editorial cartoonist, well-known to all of us, Jack Omen, but certainly preceded by others who, for both writing and as well as other aspects of investigative reporting, that the Bee, over the years, and their staff have been recognized for their work in that regard by peers and colleagues, but obviously that's the top prize, to be recognized by your peers. And I would just say that, too, that I think it's important, whether one agrees or disagrees with what is put in their print, to have a publication that covers both the local aspects of what happens, the daily and daily life of a community, but also then reports on, in a state as big and dynamic as California, certainly a country as blessed as we are in the United States of America, and then around the world, you know, is connected for generations now, for 16 decades, folks, with both the outside goings-on, but also the inner workings of this community in many ways. Though not always popular with its imprint, nonetheless, I think the adherence to, you know, both the ethics that come with publication of a newspaper, but also, I think, the work that goes into putting that forth every day, is a real testament to not only the permanence, but I think to the independence of the Sacramento Bee. And so, with all that being said, I just, on behalf of this board, on behalf of a community that really, I think, appreciates all the work that goes into it, and I think the conscientious approach to making sure that people know what is happening in their community, and provided a real opportunity, and hopefully will continue to do that for many decades to come. And so, as the Sacramento Bee, certainly under Cheryl's leadership, and that of the Executive Editor and Vice President Joyce Turhar, and all the folks that, again, helped put that together on a daily basis, we want to congratulate you, say happy anniversary. You're all into the 161st year by a few days now, and certainly this is a milestone, but one, again, that you celebrate. And I was thinking this morning, just last comment I make, that you think about it, and I know that you did a little piece in the newspaper over the weekend, you know, this goes back to, you know, pre-Civil War, and you think about the Civil War, and the assassination of presidents, the Reconstruction, the Industrial Revolution, women's suffrage, the World Wars, the Depression, and right on through to floods and fires, and, you know, deaths of prominent people, and issues of the day that you're covering relative to homelessness, and, you know, the growth in the community and so forth. I mean, it goes on and on and on and on. We could spend a lot of time talking about it, but again, that is the chronicling and the recordation of history as it's made on a daily basis, and life that's lived daily in a community. And so, I want to compliment you and all the folks at the Sacramento Bee, congratulate you on behalf of this board, and certainly the broader community, and wish you well as you embark upon the next milestone. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. You do have a future in marketing, by the way.
[laughing]
That was really lovely, and I have to tell you, Supervisor Natoli, I've been thinking an awful lot myself about the people who have come before us at the Bee and in the community, and, you know, marvel at the fact that we have been around since Sacramento was a very tiny town.
of the day that you're covering relative to homelessness, and, you know, the growth in the community and so forth. I mean, it goes on and on and on and on. We could spend a lot of time talking about it. But again, that is the chronicling and the recordation of history as it's made on a daily basis, and life that's lived daily in a community. And so I want to compliment you and all the folks at the Sacramento Bee, congratulate you on behalf of this board, and certainly the broader community, and wish you well as you embark upon the next milestone. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. You do have a future in marketing, by the way.
[laughing]
That was really lovely. And I have to tell you, Supervisor Natoli, I've been thinking an awful lot myself about the people who have come before us at the Bee and in the community, and, you know, marvel at the fact that we have been around since Sacramento was a very tiny town in a plain with a nearby gold rush. And, you know, you think about that, our first editions were published with that electricity. I thought it might be of interest to all of you to know that the first actual photograph that appeared in the Sacramento Bee in the late 1800s was of the Sacramento County Sheriff. And that's my way of introducing what is really a thank you to you and to all of you, not just for the recognition today, but for your great service on behalf of the public. And certainly, you're right, we don't always agree on things, but there is absolutely no doubt that each of you want the best for the community, as do we. And it's been really rewarding to look at that through the years, and to see not just the things that we've disagreed on, but the things that we've agreed on that have made this community the very special place that it is. So on behalf of our employees, I just want to say thank you, and commend each of you for your personal sacrifice to do the work that you do, and to wish us all success as we make our way to the next 160 years. Thank you.
Step into a picture.
I'll have to get a copy.
Okay, it won't make the front page at all, I think, so.
[laughing]
Great, we'll make sure you get the copy, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes.
If I might, before Cheryl leaves the lectern there, I was a little disappointed when I read through the whereas. There's no whereas about the rite of passage that the Sacramento Bee has provided for those 160 years for the young people in our community that deliver the Bee. And as one of those people, and I think there are probably some others here, it would be interesting to know, and I don't know if the Bees ever tried to tabulate this for a given period of time, but it'd be interesting to know how many young people in their, you know, pre-teen years or teen years actually cycle through and make that part of learning about, you know, having the responsibility of making sure that the paper's delivered on time, and certainly collecting the fees at the end of the month, which is always the worst part, right? But that was certainly my introduction to a work ethic, and I know it has been for probably thousands and thousands of young people through the years, through the decades here in Sacramento.
Thank you. And you know what we should do? On International Carrier Day, we should feature you and all of you, and we'll try to get some other distinguished folks in the community who carry the Bee, because it is just a great way to learn the kind of discipline and character that helps make you a success.
I would agree, getting up at 4:30 in the morning on a Sunday builds character, so.
Especially in weather like today, right?
That's right.
You know, it's funny you say that, because I remember, just harking back to grade school, when actually when the Bee was the afternoon edition, and the Sacramento Union was the morning publication. And so if you could get, be a Bee, you know, newspaper delivery person, you know, girl, boy, that was the primo one, because getting up at 4:30 in the morning to get the Sacramento Union out, I had a good friend who was a Sacramento Union delivery boy for a couple of years. I remember getting up, and it was like, you know, it was, you know, o dark 30 out there, and you got, you know, you got your bike, two of you, loaded down with newspapers. But he was always trying to get, you know, the Bee carrier route, to our delivery route.
Must have been a big disappointment when they shifted to morning, huh?
Yeah.
Especially on Thanksgiving Day, when those papers weighed, you know, four or five pounds. That was a lot of fun.
Probably had to carry them to the point, yeah.
And in the Sacramento Tully fog. Yeah, that's right. That's exactly right.
Anyway, thanks for that.
Thank Cheryl.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl.
For item 42, I need a motion to drop. It's approve the proposed revisions and incorporate these revisions by addendum into the current county standard construction specifications.
Okay. Mike, did you want to add anything before? This has been carried on our agenda for a better part of a year now, and...
It has been. Good morning, members of the board. Mike Penrose, Department of Transportation. And we are asking that this item be dropped today. We have further work to do, we think, in terms of addressing the impacts of utility trench on the roadway system, but adoption of a formal revised standard is not something we think we should pursue at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? If not, then the motion would be to drop this item. Chair would move?
Second.
Okay, move in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you.
Item 43 is the Department of Health and Human Services Drug and Alcohol Program Update, Methamphetamine Work Group, the Opiate Abuse Task Force.
Okay. And we do have a number of speakers sign up on this, so after we hear Dr. Heller's presentation, take questions from the board initially, and then we'll go to our speakers. So, good morning, Sheri.
Good morning. Just waiting for the cover page to come up here. Brilliant. Thanks very much. Good morning, members of the board. I'm Sheri Heller, the Director of your Department of Health and Human Services. This is one in a series of conversations that we've been having about alcohol and drug addiction, and the county's role in responding to it. I'm sure you recall discussions around budget time in June, and again in September. We had a workshop, an informational presentation in November as well. And you folks were pretty clear that you wanted an update well before budget time this coming year, and so that's what we're doing. There is a lot of comprehensive planning underway that we're going to talk about, but I want to begin by just updating you on changes that have already happened in our programming. The most important of which probably is that it's a lot easier to get to our treatment services than it was some time ago, a year ago. We have opened increased assessment and referral points, not only at our original location, the system of care on Power In Road, but also at the county main jail, the probation department, the primary care center, the homeless clinic at Guest House, and the juvenile court. And this has been warmly received by people in need of a treatment, advocates who are trying to steer people to treatment, and the treatment providers themselves. Thanks to your action, we have also increased treatment service capacity in the Room for Dads program, where the board approved 285,000 for a recovery program after hours outpatient and drug treatment services for fathers involved with the family drug court system. The board also improved in the budget this year in excess of $1 million in the current budget to expand residential treatment and detoxification services. It's, I had hoped to be able to give you some information on the impact of the waiting, on the waiting list of having done that, and I think everybody agrees it's a little too soon, but we're monitoring that closely and have every expectation that that will have the desired effect, reducing the waiting list for treatment services. Also, of course, we expanded family drug court, the early intervention family drugs court, got an extra $280,000 in this year's budget, enabling us to serve an additional 50 families a year. And the mental health court created a co-recurring court to address the needs of individuals with serious mental illness who also need specialized substance use treatment. I'll just parenthetically comment, you know, I'm not an expert on addiction treatment, but what I have been learning about the difficulty of providing coherent drug treatment to somebody who also has mental illness is pretty fascinating and challenging, and we're in a leadership role there. The board asked us to develop an alcohol and drug services comprehensive plan that was quantitative in nature, and that was focused on our needs here in the community, rather than just chasing grants and going after funding opportunities. And we are well on our way to that kind of planning. It's, there's lots of strands. We're not going to talk about them all today, just as one example for thing we're not really going to discuss, but I can't help mentioning, is very, very exciting and high-impact work by our youth council working on underage drinking. So there'll be other opportunities, I think, when we bring a comprehensive plan forward to tell you about all of those things. Today, we're going to focus on three particular initiatives that are informing our planning. The work of the opiate task force, the work of a methamphetamine work group, and our preparation for potential opt-in to the organized delivery system waiver that California is embarking on with the federal government.
Sheri, can I just, real quickly, you already left that slide, I guess, but I'll go back to just, so, kind of bring this from the, you know, higher level, just down to the level at the street. And I know you say it may be a little early to report on, you know, some of the progress that's been made with, you know, both additional funding, but also ramping up. But if for today, and again, I just use an example that was shared with me by Supervisor Serna a few weeks ago, when we had caseworkers out there, you had an encampment, or many tents along the Garden Highway, and I think social workers and caseworkers went out there and had contact. It was during the rainy weather in January, and if I recall, and maybe Phil could correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, of some 80-plus folks that they made contact with, and some took vouchers and so forth. But the predominant theme with those folks was that they were either had, you know, some drug addiction, there may be some mental health issues, too, but methamphetamine, and maybe opioid as well. But I guess my question, though, is that, so on the street, if we made that contact today, say they were out here on I Street, and we went out there, and somebody said, "Okay, if you can help me," not just with how, "if you could help me," could they get in? Could we admit them to a program? And, you know, it's one thing to have referrals, it's kind of like the same queue that we have with navigators, is if you don't, you know, it's nice to give people information and say, "Well, if you call Joe so-and-so over there, maybe they'll see you in 30 or 60 days." If you grasp the moment, I mean, we've talked this before, and I know I posed this question to you in that regard, are either we envisioning, and are we at any point where the capacity-wise, that if you make that contact, and you're dealing with other issues that may or may not be related to their addiction, that they could actually get in today, or tomorrow, or early next week? Or are we still in this, you know, I know that, I give you kind of a general theme here, but circumstances might dictate some of that. But I'm curious, because otherwise, it's like, we keep talking about what we're going to do, and how we're going to do it, and how good we're going to be at doing it and helping folks, but to me, the measure is, and again, this is not a criticism, as much as just trying to get some sense about it, is what we're doing, and are we doing not just better, but timeliness, in my view, is very critical when it comes to this. You know, otherwise, if you get them in the moment, maybe you're able to help them. But if not, they're not going to sit around and wait, and come back and see you in 60 days.
I certainly agree with that last observation. When somebody's ready, being on a waiting list is not helpful. I am going to defer to Uma Zykowsky, our Behavioral Health Director, to give you the current state of the waiting list.
Okay, Phil may want to weigh in, too.
And I look forward to hearing, it was response to the chair's questions and comments. Let me put a little finer point on it. You know, this board, I don't believe I'm the only one, I would assume that this board, all members of it, continue on occasion to get, to receive correspondence from various constituents, or others from outside of the county, that have had some experience with a, most likely a relative, or perhaps even a son or daughter that has, or is suffering mental illness. And there's usually a punchline at the end of the email or letter about why doesn't Sacramento County implement Laura's Law? And as you're well aware, Sheri, there's been a lot of thought given by this board as individual members, and as an entire board, to the merits of that versus our CARES+ program. But I'm wondering if there is any program out there, anything like a Laura's Law but for the addicted. In other words, is there some kind of intensive program, outreach program, or some kind of complement to our drug court system, for instance, that we should be thinking about to answer the question that Chair Natoli has raised, which is, how do you not necessarily, you know, put someone in a straitjacket and force them to do anything against their will, but at what point does their addiction so fierce that it is a clear threat to their mental health, their general health, and also, quite frankly, to the general health of the public? And as someone that has been accidentally stuck by a hypodermic needle, I could attest to the fact that that's a very real thing. It's a very real threat. So, I mean, this member of the board is extremely interested in not just understanding the progress that's been made, and I really do look forward to the rest of this presentation, and certainly want to thank everyone that's been responsible for our progress to date. But I'm with Dawn, I think we have to be looking at what measures we can take to the next level that actually begin to, quite frankly, more forcefully confront addiction in the community, so that we are very aggressive on getting people into treatment. And if they're not willing to consider it at a specific point in time for various reasons, what can we do to change the message and the practice of really expressing why it's so important for them to, in some cases, avoid death? So that's kind of how I'm, the prism I'm looking through in terms of what we're going to hear, the balance of today. But certainly moving forward, I'd certainly encourage our staff to think about those models, if they exist, let's go explore them, if not develop them ourselves.
And I would just say, Dawn, you're going to respond, but what sticks in my mind was an image that you described to me when the caseworkers went out a couple of weeks ago. And a pregnant mom, as I understood, was in her third trimester, admitted to being meth-addicted, refused help, even for shelter.
Waiting for a partner to come out of the main jail.
Yeah, and we got a partner in the main jail. Now, choices, but the unborn didn't have a choice. And obviously, if the addiction was as described, again, you know, without knowing any more than was told to me, you know, you're going to have a potentially a tox baby. But that, to me, and it goes to your point, you know, how do you, one, capture their interest when that spark may be there? But secondly, again, if not, in situations like that, again, without, you know, stepping on somebody's rights to make choices about their own lives and so forth, do we, you know, coax, prod, encourage, you know, basically short of forcing somebody, get somebody, like, again, that just, that image sticks in my mind. I don't know the person, I don't, certainly, you know, I don't, you know, what the health condition of that baby was. But that's just reflecting, one example that probably occurs countless times. And again, there's all the good that we do, too. And so again, this is not in any way negative, it's just that my sense is, is that we talk about issues of homelessness, about mental illness, about certainly related to, you know, our institutions, and whether it's the jail, or mental health treatment center, or a hospital ERs and so forth, that we've got something that borders on epidemic, certainly in this country, but I think certainly in this community, epidemic in the sense that it may be getting better for some of those folks that we do get help for. But, and you're going to point out some of this, obviously, in the report, growing opioid, you know, use, some of that came out of prescribed medication and so forth. My point being Sheri, though, is that, that's, that to me, those are the real people. The people that, you know, if they were here, you look into their eyes, and they might deny anything and any help. And that may be their right as an adult that hasn't, you know, committed a crime that they're going to be arrested for. But to me, it's, you know, it's a sad situation if we can't do more to try to get folks help. And certainly those, you know, I think about the unborn child. That, to me, is a very, very sad situation. And the drug gets a hold of their lives. And so, anyway, I know Supervisor Serna put some points forward, and you're going to have Uma, but anything else you would want to respond to? Because I know you care very deeply, and certainly have expressed, I think, your interest in trying to, you know, help lead the effort here to do more.
I understand the points you've both made. I'm going to call on Director Zykowsky to talk about the current status of the waiting list. If you want to add something about the likelihood of success of a more aggressive forcing of the unwilling to treatment, I invite you to do that, too, before I come back.
Yeah, thanks, Sheri. Good morning, Uma.
Good morning, members of the board. I know you have a whole presentation, so I'll try to answer some of the questions briefly, and definitely come back to them. To respond to the chair's question, these increased access points refer to places where we are making every effort for the DHA staff and everybody. We can assess people for treatment right immediately, and outpatient treatment is available at all our providers without a wait time. So the outpatient portion is available for anybody homeless or otherwise without a wait point, waitlist.
And just for clarification, what would outpatient entail? If it got immediate service, what would that mean?
It would mean they would receive counseling, they'd receive assessments, they'd receive group treatment, some degree of crisis management. So it's a menu of services. group treatment, some degree of crisis management, so it's a menu of services, but done at the provider sites, of which we have a fairly large sprinkling across our community. Large sprinkling doesn't sound right, the number of providers. So outpatient is really clinic-based counseling and other services in that regard, and then we also have our narcotic treatment providers, our NTP. So we have outpatient services available without any wait points, but to speak to the efforts made by this board to increase residential treatment, I did pull some data to just have some preliminary ideas. When we started a year ago, we had a waitlist of about 37 days before somebody could reach services. Since this was authorized, and we were able to put it into the contracts in December, the wait time has now gone down to 27, so there's a significant change in the wait time. I went back to look also at August 2016, which would be before the three-month, when you're on the waitlist, you're already on the waitlist, so I went a little bit behind to August. To compare August to current, we went from 194 clients on the waitlist to 106. So, the efforts made by the board around the residential arena are making an impact, but there is still a wait time to get into the residential level. I do want to say something a little bit different as well, which is that in 2016, the Surgeon General released a report on addiction across the country, and in that report, he indicated, there were a couple of important facts, which I think are relevant to us. One is that across the country, only about 10%, of individuals are receiving appropriate addiction treatment, across all sectors, residential, outpatient, everything. So, the gap is very great across the entire country in these areas.
Is that for all substances, Uma?
Yes, yes. It's a very, very factual report with a lot of information in it, but it strikes you at how underfunded and under-resourced substance use has been for many, many years. So, we're sort of catching up with the situation that's been very prevalent. The other thing which is in that report, which is also a measure of what we are trying to grapple with, which is that it takes about 18 months to two years for someone to go through all the different levels of treatment someone needs to master, if you will, to recover. So, if you are, if you need a residential level of treatment, then you go into residential level, then you finish that, you do outpatient, then you have recovery services, so it's a long road in terms of motivation and mastery of your recovery, and there are ups and downs in it, there's people who go up and down. So, some of the challenges we're facing around the population, the homeless population, that two weeks ago, very big efforts were made to help out, is that some of that population, voluntary services were being offered via all these access points and everything, however, there is no, there is nothing short of citation or something that gives you a hook if someone says no. It's not like you can take Laura's Law and that kind of, Laura's Law was very specifically around certain parameters around serious mental illness, it doesn't really apply to the other population.
I wasn't suggesting we apply Laura's Law to this situation, it was the, kind of the, the structure of the protocol.
Yes.
When you have someone that is, you know, someone that is presenting as a threat to themselves or others, but in this case, the threat is the addiction itself, and especially with methamphetamine, we know that unlike other substances, that has a permanent effect on psychosis. So, to me, that's why I've been such an outspoken, I have so much outspoken interest on methamphetamine in particular, is because it has a permanence, and quite frankly, an associated criminality characteristic that is very different than other substances.
One last thing, and then I will step away, is I think if Supervisor Serna, if you look at the application we're putting together for Prop 47 funding at this time, we very much are trying to utilize that application, that mechanism of the Prop 47 grants, to bring the co-occurring, both the mental health and substance use folks into that system of the mental health court.
If the Chair will indulge me, so, I just wanted to try and briefly explain a story, and it was actually written, it was cited in the Bee in an editorial about a week ago, and that was, for those of us that did the point-in-time homeless count a few Wednesdays ago, the team I was with encountered a young woman, 28-years-old, admitting that she had an addiction to opioids.
Thanks, Seth.
There was not much more than I could have done, except give her my card, and please ask, you know, ask her to follow up and call my office tomorrow, so that we can help her navigate to find some services as soon as possible. That's extremely frustrating, I don't, especially, and I, believe me, I appreciate the fact that we've taken 10 days off the average wait, but what do I, what do we tell people that are not only admitting that they have an addiction, but they're also saying, and this was the case that evening, that they want help? What do I say? There's a month-long waiting list, can you try and detox until then? I don't, you know, I'm stuck, in terms of what I know about what I can offer my constituents.
One thing which I think we can do right away is get you some of the referral cards, which have all the pertinent information that we have, and be able to try to get those out a lot more. I don't have the answer to what you are asking me today, but I do think that in that circumstance, if it was opioid addiction, and we were able to connect that person to one, any part of our system, we would assess and try to move that forward. So at least in that area, I will make sure that we get to every board of supervisors the information that we are circulating.
It might be worth, it might be worth actually having scheduled one-on-one briefings with each supervisor, to kind of just go over the gamut of what we or our staff can offer.
Sure.
When we, you know, we don't have to wait every two years to have that encounter, certainly, there's plenty of other opportunity to have interaction with our constituents that may be addicted. So I think it would be very helpful if we got, you know, an education, one-on-one education about how we can actually complement the system, so to speak, so that we can do our best to get them what they need. But still, I assume, if I give them the cards that you mentioned, does that mean that that person can go and immediately detox somewhere that's not gonna be out of the elements, and they can progress through the system to, you know, the 18-month, 24-month system you mentioned?
No, it would mean that we'd be able to assess what level of treatment, that if they needed detox or residential, you are absolutely correct regarding the waiting list frustration we all have. But if that person's presentation and assessment made it possible for them to immediately link into the outpatient system, or the NTP provider system, that would not be any weight associated with their need. So it really is about that, doing a good assessment around what the treatment need is at their front end, and that is what we are trying to do, so that those people who can be put into treatment at the right level can get into treatment. That doesn't fix the other issue that you raised.
So, last thing, because I know we need to get through this, but, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, there will continue to be a lot of discussion at this board, about a triage center for our homeless population that would be very accommodating in terms of addressing some of the barriers that have been prohibitive in the past, in terms of the receptivity to accepting the help, namely, well, you know, shelter doesn't accept pets, well, this would. Shelter doesn't accept partners, well, this would. Where are we gonna safely store our possessions? We got a place for your possessions. So that's what we're exploring, and it's gonna, it's gonna come to a head this June with discussions, with budgetary discussions. Is there a clear opportunity, in your estimation at this point, that there's not, that there's room in the design of that, so that there could be that kind of point of entry for addiction services as well? In other words, someone that may have all those concerns in their life, they're homeless, is also addicted, could it, could the design of a triage center that's time-limited, you know, whatever it is gonna be, 30 to 90 days, could it have intensive presence of addiction services, so that we can kind of not only get them out of the elements, but actually capture them at the moment that they desire to seek sobriety?
Yes, I've been working with Cindy Kavanaugh, and Ann Edwards Buckley, and others in the county, to make sure that we're able to also be part of the solution that's being developed. So, in terms of design and so forth, we are thinking about how to do it, but I would venture to say right now, that just as we have increased the access points here, that would clearly be another access point of very great importance for us to connect with.
Good to hear.
Uma, just give me, just before you leave the dice, because you mentioned Prop 47, and we did have an item this morning, as you're well aware, and I see that some folks that maybe got delayed in the rain, actually wanted to speak to that item, at least some have indicated support for that item, and you referenced it, so I just wanted to know for the folks that are here, we've got folks sign up on item 43 once the presentation's completed, but I would allow folks on item 13, we could just, we'll reference it, we've already taken action to approve it on the consent calendar, but allow folks to speak to that, because it does interrelate here relative to mental health, to substance abuse, and some of the initiatives. A question I had for you before you left, though, is that when you say the 10% nationally, how many millions, or tens of millions, what is that 10% number of, the 90% that are not getting either access and/or treatment, or whatever, so do you know what those numbers are relative to the percentage you just quoted?
I think Sherri says she has it in the presentation.
Oh, you do?
You're testing me here. I would have to go back to look at the Surgeon General's report to get your exact data point, but I will, I will get to that.
Okay, well.
There is a very sort of poignant way that is stated, that the numbers that are being served do not touch more than a very small percentage of the need nationally.
Yeah, and it's reflected here, community-wise too, so, okay, thanks, Uma. Any other questions for Uma while she's there? Okay, thanks, Sherri, we'll let you continue and...
Thank you, Uma, that was very helpful to me. Appreciate the support. I want to acknowledge the feeling of stuckness. It's real in this community, I think, but I think there are several very specific paths to getting unstuck, and they're in the near term, so it's not some long-term pie in the sky. I think there is significant progress that we can make in the coming year, on being able to get people the treatment they need when they're ready, and we'll talk about a few of them. With regard to the questions about whether it's likely to be effective to get more aggressive about getting people into treatment who are not feeling motivated, but they're creating a public hazard to their unborn child, to public safety and so forth, I think frankly, that that is going to vary somewhat by the nature of the drug they're addicted to. As Mr. Serna pointed out, some are easier than others, and that's one of the things we're learning in this work, and I know that there are members, treatment providers and experts who are here today to address you, who were members of the Opiate Task Force and the Methamphetamine Work Group, and I am learning a great deal myself, talking to them, about what it takes for treatment to work, about why treatment fails with some people, about the fact that people can get clean, but they don't forget what it felt like to be high. And so, even if you, even if you can medically stop the craving, there is a yearning that has to be dealt with, and that means there has to be something in your life, whether it's keeping custody of your kids, or staying out of prison, there has to be something in your life that makes it worth it to turn away from that memory.
Or peer support too, right?
Peer support, absolutely, and the providers will, are teaching me about that, and I'm sure they'll address it today when they talk with you. The first initiative that we wanted to focus on today is the work of the Opiate Task Force. Our task force includes physicians, including emergency room physicians, addiction treatment professionals, including medically assisted treatment, county pharmacists, hospitals, higher education, law enforcement, community associations, and a lot of county staff, including from the DA, environmental management, waste management, public defender, sheriff, and so forth. We're not gonna go into all of their work, they, there's a lot of material attached to the staff report, which I invite you to ask questions about if you like. I note that Supervisor Peters in particular has urged us to pay good attention, and to come with some action items about disposing of unwanted drugs, and while we've made some progress with increased kiosks and drug take-back location, and take-back events, we are, with our partners from environmental management, we are seriously investigating the legal authority to adopt county ordinances that would be effective, and that would be effective. We're examining what other counties have done. Also, we are about to get, or will soon get, regulations from the state board that will set out such authority, so we're taking that request seriously, and while we're not presenting as an action item today, it's sort of on top of our list. The Opiate Task Force produced a drug monitoring surveillance report, which I urge your attention to, is one of the more extraordinary pieces of work I think we've seen. It was done with looking at over 8 million opioid prescriptions, prescribed by over 46,000 prescribers, for over a million Sacramento residents from 2008 to 2015. So their zip codes were analyzed, the nature of the drugs that were prescribed, how soon they were prescribed, and so forth. There's a lot of information in your attachment about this report, it's full of key insights. I've just put a couple of them on the slide that stood out to me. First, a significant increase in prescriptions for infants less than two-years of age. Now what this means is that the medical community is becoming increasingly aware and able to recognize the symptoms of babies that are born to parents, to mothers who are using during pregnancy, and to help those babies with the withdrawal symptoms they're suffering from. So that's what that data means, an increased recognition of withdrawal symptoms in the babies. The overall pattern of opioid prescribing during this period saw sharp increases in 2008, '09, plateauing in 2010 to 2013, and decreasing in 2014, '15. It's not known whether that decreasing trend will persist, but there was careful analysis by the task force, for example, we know that the decrease shows up not only overall, but per capita, so it's not a population effect, it really is decreasing number of prescriptions. And it appears, upon closer looking at the data, that what's happening is that the doctors are looking to alternatives to painkiller medication for the people who are experiencing less severe pain. We're not necessarily seeing the doctors turn away from opioids for people with a real severe need, and that's an important distinction. We're looking to avoid misuse or unnecessary use of the opioids, not to avoid them where they're needed. I remember that in November, Mr. Serna, you were really adamant that we pay attention to this phenomenon, and not characterize opioids as somehow evil in and of themselves, or dangerous in and of themselves. They are appropriate and useful, and have been for a long time, for treating pain for short-term injuries, surgeries, cancer treatment, end-of-life care, and so forth. What was happening during the period of increase is that prescribers were increasingly using them for shorter-term needs, and where other alternative pain management techniques would have been appropriate. So we are taking care in this, in this task force, not to stigmatize an important tool that's available for people for pain management. But if we use them as a treatment for chronic pain, that's gonna become problematic, with many side effects, including, interestingly enough, if you use it for treatment over a long period of time for chronic pain, one of the side effects is more sensitivity to pain. So it has, it has, you need more and more, because it's less and less effective over time. So that's the kind of nuance that all these doctors and pharmacists on the task force are looking at, as we make policy. Last thing I want to show you on this slide is a piece, yes?
Sorry, before you switch through the chair, Sherri, did you, did you find that part of the problem is that there, when you have patients, that when there are patients that are suffering chronic pain, I mean, it's, it's, there's a basic level of pain that's constant throughout their daily lives, that, part of the problem was that doctors were prescribing kind of the early release, more intensive effect... that doctors were prescribing kind of the early-release, more intensive effect drugs for that chronic pain versus a more appropriate long-acting opioid for that chronic pain?
There, I don't know that I know enough to give a simple, straightforward answer to your question, but it is clear that the members of our task force are looking carefully at the patterns of prescribing low dose versus long-acting, high intensity versus long-acting for different kinds of cases, and getting guidance out to the medical community on what's appropriate. And you'll see a slide or two later, very specific goals that address the issue of what dosage and what kind of medication is appropriate in what situation.
Is there any noticeable trend data on which specific opioids are more abused than others, early release versus long-acting?
I don't know that I can make it that simple. I'm looking for Dr. Casirio to see if she's arrived. Do you want to answer that one, or do you not know?
We don't have that.
Okay. So Dr. Casirio, our public health officer, is telling me that we don't have specific data on that. You will see very specific goals that get at the general issue, however.
Sheri, just before you leave that, one other point, though, and you covered in your verbal, and it's in the report, you talked about the ZIP code data, but apparently it was incomplete, and that through the cures process, that one of the recommended actions is that we actually petition for more data sets that would allow us to look at geographical as well as provider-type data. And I guess I would just say that if that's the case, I wouldn't just put it on staff. We need a board resolution, or, you know, the letter on behalf of this board, to the chair, to request that. If that helps, you know, it's data. On the other hand, as pointed out, it makes it impossible with the current data sets to, you know, to detect, and this is from the report, geographic patterns in patients at highest risk for potential opioid misuse. And then you also, the provider or prescriber types are, and why that wouldn't be released, you know, certainly in the confidential nature that doesn't, you know, get into anybody's confidential information, I guess I'm a little bit, you know, puzzled by that, but would just say that if that helps this task force's work in addition to the goals that are stated, then we ought to ask for that post haste and make it clear that on behalf of this county, we, you know, as, you know, the provider and the overseer of a lot of the public health and/or information, drug and alcohol, and so forth, that's being delivered here, and services, either through, directly and/or indirectly through nonprofit partners, and that we need to have this information. And why somebody would sit on that and not release is a mystery to me. And so I think that we need to help the task force and certainly your offices, and so now, but I just looked at you and to Dr. Heller, if there's something we need to constitute to make it very clear that we believe we need that information and the reasons why, because it's pointed out here, and I think you kind of referenced it, but it seems like it was kind of...
Yeah, the data on the location of the prescribers is in a statewide database, so it's not county-controlled, and we did the best, the task force did the best they could with it. There is a specific goal that the task force has set to improve the data collection, and I guarantee you that I will be looking for action items where we can affect that. You know, we did, this is a little bit off your question, but I think it's pertinent to the general issues you're raising. We did look at the ZIP codes of the people who come to our system for treatment in an effort to try to distinguish between opiate and meth, and is it, I mean, Mr. Serna had raised the question to me in November, you know, is it that opiates are a middle-class suburban problem and meth is an urban problem? And we tried to examine that question, and I'll just give you some example data for the period that we looked at. If we look at the opioid admissions to our treatment system by ZIP code, you see a lot of homeless people. You see Del Paso Heights, South Sacramento, Carmichael, Arden Arcade, Gold River, Rancho Cordova, Citrus Heights, that's sort of, I'm going down in quantity. And then if you look at the meth admissions by ZIP code, Arden Arcade, Del Paso Heights, Oak Park, South Sacramento, Mayfair Art, Carmichael, Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, Gold River. So I don't think it's going to be as simple as saying, here's where the meth is and here's where the opiates are. You're seeing very widespread addiction in all of those communities.
Across the board.
I'm sorry?
Across the board.
Yeah. I do want to point out one piece of good news, and then before we go on to the next slide, and that is we expected to see a certain level of doctor shopping. Doctor shopping is defined as one person getting six or more opioid prescriptions, or six or more prescribers for a person, or six or more pharmacies within six months. We expected to see a lot more of that than we did. The data actually show that 65% of the people who got prescriptions in the database had only one prescriber. 75% used only one pharmacy. And that's good news in terms of the fact, can we get, can we teach prescribers and pharmacies to manage this problem and look for it? I think so.
Who sets that bar? That seems like an awful lot.
It is a lot.
And why isn't it three and three, not six and six?
Well, I mean, we could set the bar differently, and you'd have slightly, the data would just look different. There's no acceptable or unacceptable implied here. This was just our way of saying, how big a problem do we have with people going around seeking more prescriptions, even though the doctors and pharmacies are trying to do the right thing?
I mean...
And we did not find very much of that.
I guess it's a matter of opinion, but it seems to me, if you have, if you have someone that goes to one other doctor just to add to their...
Medicine chest.
Yeah, to their medicine cabinet, that should be a red flag, it seems to me. But again, I don't, that's why I asked the question.
I hear the feedback, and we'll take that back to the task force.
Is that coming from the CDC? Is it coming from some national standard somewhere? Here comes the doctor.
Dr. Casirio's going to answer your question.
Two doctors, Dr. Heller and Dr. Casirio.
Yes, hi, this is Dr. Olivia Casirio, Public Health Officer. Thank you for having this meeting. The answer to your question is, when we were doing this analysis, it was actually, we were using national standards. So this is what is used across the entire United States. I think the important thing to point out also, as Dr. Heller mentioned, is that we thought it would happen more often. But what we're finding is that actually, it's not so much the doctor shopping as the fact that there are a lot more people who are getting prescriptions, and they don't even have to go to different doctors, they just go back to their same doctor to get the prescription. So where, it helps us in figuring out where we need to put our focus. It's not so much on people's behavior, even though that's one of the things that we look for, but it's looking at the prescribers and looking at instances in which the prescriptions are written.
I guess all I'm saying is that for me, it seems like we're declaring, hey, there's low doctor shopping, but it's based on this national standard of six different prescribers in six months, if I understand it correctly, and that just seems absurdly high, and so...
It is a high standard, yes, but part of that is, if you set it too low, then you may include people who, for other reasons, maybe they had to move or something like that.
I understand that. That's why I wouldn't suggest that it be, you know, all the way at the other extreme, but it just seems like that's a lot of doctors and a lot of prescriptions in a short amount of time.
And there are people who have that, but it's just that this is one of the factors that we look at, not the only one, when we're looking at misuse.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Olivia.
I want to point out one other piece of good news on this slide that's sort of buried. You saw that there was an overall increase and then a plateau in 2010, 2013, and you wonder, is that because of awareness of addiction or what? I would just point out that it was in 2009 that doctors and pharmacies were first allowed in California to access the database. So it's the first time doctors, before they wrote a prescription, could look you up and see if you had just gotten another painkiller within the last few days, and the same with pharmacies. So what that tells me is you've got professionals out there in the pharmacy and the medical community who are, in fact, using the tools available to them to manage.
Wasn't there also an edict, and I'm not sure from where it came, but it changed the prescribing protocol for refills in that time period, too, that made it a little more difficult for folks?
I don't know the answer to that question, but do you want to... But a member of your Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, who I trust, is nodding to me.
Yes, there have been several changes that have been made about prescriptions, and all of this is geared towards reducing the number of prescriptions that are written. The other thing that was done more frequently, more recently, actually, is that now all physicians who do any prescription are required to register with the state drug monitoring system, and highly encouraged to check before they write a prescription. Pharmacists were already doing it and checking before they refilled it, but now more and more physicians are using it to check.
What about, and I just know this kind of anecdotally from folks I know that are struggling with chronic pain, but what about this practice of, I believe it's termed a contract, so that there's a contract between the physician and the patient, so that intensely monitors them so they're not more likely to abuse?
That's one of the tools that we're using, and our subcommittee that is working with the physicians, that's one of the tools that they're promoting to clinicians, to actually have a contract signed, when, especially when they're starting a new patient on an opioid, and especially if it's going to be for a long time.
Thank you. Just winding up on the Opioid Task Force, one thing I wanted to draw your attention to here is that the task force is setting very concrete goals for our community, community-wide goals, dealing with high daily dose prescriptions, which they measure by morphine milligram equivalents, and there's, it's very quantitative, I've summarized it on the slide. Other very specific goals they're setting, such as reducing the number of overlapping opioid prescriptions with other prescriptions by 25%, so that phenomenon, and also decreasing, this is a point that was made earlier, decreasing by, to 15%, the percent of first-time opioid prescription recipients who are getting long-acting or extended-release drugs right from the beginning, which, so there's very specific kinds of prescription changes that are being sought. I want to contrast that, because we're about to turn our attention to the methamphetamine issue. It's apparent to me that things like changing prescribing practices, medication-assisted therapies, doctor education, pharmacy practices, the kinds of things we've been talking about, even drug disposal options, these are options that are available to us to work on the opioid problem, not available to us when we focus on methamphetamine. We really, first, I want to give kudos to the Methamphetamine Collaborative Work Group, again, advisory board members, community members, county agencies, including probation, sheriff, CPS, jail medical, district attorney, public offender, health providers, addiction treatment providers, law enforcement, hospitals, homeless contractors.
Everybody.
Everybody was there, but with a particular focus on impact to other systems, impact on the jail, impact on child protective services and so forth. Their first priority was to try to meet your request to quantify the need in our community. What is the gap? How much meth addiction is there out there? How many are we treating? And that turned out to be an awful lot harder than we expected to do. What we did in this report is try to sort of interpolate between state-level data and our own treatment data to come up with a quantified estimate. So we took, for example, the prevalence data statewide, how many low-income people are likely to be dealing with the need for addiction, and then we took our own statistics about what percentage of the people seeking our treatment for addiction are having methamphetamine issues. It's not really a measure of how many are using, but it does tell you something about maybe how many people are being forced by the criminal justice system, or CPS, or others to seek treatment in our system. So if we, and this is the data, if we have some 35,000 individuals below 200% of poverty level in Sacramento County who probably need drug and alcohol treatment services, and we estimate that some 24% of them, in round figures, 8,500, probably need treatment for methamphetamine. Then we look at how much of the need we're meeting. It varies by age, 6% to 16%, with the largest gap being transition-age adults, age 18 to 24, where perhaps we're serving 6% of the people who need treatment for methamphetamine addiction in that age group. So we have a long way to go. It's complicated, of course, by the fact that not everybody signs up.
Yeah.
All right? I mean, we quantified it. We said, okay, if we were meeting all the need, if everybody who was probably meth-addicted were seeking treatment, low income from our system, who aren't insured for it, it might cost us some $8.5 million to serve them all. But the fact is that only 13% of individuals who are addicted seek treatment. So I don't think we should overreact to the size of that figure. The work group then set about trying to quantify the impact on other systems, criminality, child abuse, domestic violence, and so forth, and this also turned out to be harder to quantify than we expected. If you ask the providers and knowledgeable treatment professionals and others who come to the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, and I did, where is meth in terms of these phenomenon? They will tell you unequivocally, meth is the number-one drug in domestic violence And they can describe the science of why that is. Meth causes a certain kind of brain damage. Meth causes feelings of paranoia and hallucinations, and you get violent conduct. It persists, they will tell you, that you have an episode of meth, and the effects last perhaps up till a month, even into a long abstinence period, and that's why it's having these very difficult impacts. But honestly, trying to quantify it was very difficult. We had the most success...
Dr. Heller, just on that point.
Yes.
Did that take all drugs into account, including alcohol?
I'm gonna, some of those treatment providers who said this to me are in the room, and I don't know the answer to the question, but I'm going to urge them.
Okay.
I won't forget the question.
Yeah.
And also co-dependence, too, dual dependence, I guess.
Yes, there's, yes, absolutely, we see a lot of dual-use drugs.
Dr. Heller, I just want to say, I just want to announce for folks that are in the audience, too, because we're going to, we've got speakers on this, and then item 13 related, I guess, Prop 47, and then we have items 44 and 46 that we're going to take up this morning for folks here on land use items, but if you were here on the transient occupancy tax discussion, we can put that over to our afternoon session, so we'll get to 44 and 46, we'll get this to do time that it's going to take, and we'll come back this afternoon on item 45. So, sorry for the interruption, I just wanted to...
Not at all, I understand you're looking out for your guests, and I'll try to pick up the pace as well.
No, no, that's fine, that wasn't the intent, I just wanted people to know, so, go ahead.
We had the most success in trying to quantify the impact with regard to the jail. And there's different, depending on what you measure, you find different statistics. So, for example, we learned from the sheriff's staff that over the last three years, about 5% of all the bookings were meth-related in some way. There were meth paraphernalia, robbery that happened in a house where there was a meth lab, or the meth was the drug that there was a positive urine test for, and so forth.
What was the percentage?
About 5% of the bookings in the last three years were meth-related in some way. Now, that's one way of looking at it. If you look at other data, such as the urine test of a sample of male arrestees, right, so we have a sample of people who agree to be urine-tested upon arrest, males only...
More than 10 times that.
You'll find that the estimated prevalence of meth use among male arrestees in 2013 in our county was 51%.
Right.
So you can make, I mean, you can make the problem look large or small, depending on which statistic you look at.
No, it's large, no matter how you cut it, in my estimation.
Okay, I take your point. But this is our effort to quantify. We tried to quantify on child abuse similarly. The closest we got was a study from the mid-'90s from the state of Minnesota, where they estimated 30% of child abuse kids who were removed from their homes had meth involvement by the families. We found a study, we got very excited, we thought we found a study about California counties, in which a very high percentage of the counties reported that there were increased foster care placements due to meth usage in the mid-1990s, and then we discovered that there were only seven counties in the survey. So the fact that a very high percentage of them reported increased foster care placements was provocative, but not particularly useful.
What about our documentation, though? Again, we track young people and the families that come into our system, and, again, some of that's confidential information, but a lot of it is, but nonetheless, I would think that we would know...
So I was worried you... So I was, I was, I was worried you would ask me that question. Here, here's the answer. We use a statewide system to enter data about child abuse cases.
Yes.
And there is a field in that database where you can put drug of choice, and the field is almost never used, not just in our county, but across the state. It's, the drug of choice is not often listed in the system that we can query. And, you know, after I got over my frustration about that, because I really wanted to answer your question, it made sense to me that it's seldom used, because in fact, children are not removed based on the drug of choice their parents use, they're removed based on how much danger they're in, and there's an assessment of the risk they're under to their safety. I don't think we would want to be in a world where we make decisions to remove children based on what the drug of choice is that their parents use. But, but I acknowledge that I was frustrated, as I'm sure you are, that the data were not as clear as we like. I, I think if you, if you talk to, I mean, we did have CPS folks on this methamphetamine work group, on the advisory board, and they will all tell you that they see a pattern here.
Well, Sherry, if I just couldn't, again, I want to let you get to the presentation, but to some of the comments and back and forth we've had here earlier in the presentation, when you, and the stats that you just quoted relative to those who test positive, it'd be more than 50% that come into the jail, males are testing, I don't know about females, but it would seem to me, and then, and then you hearken back to just, to just to the one story that was quoted here where, you know, ladies camped along the river, pregnant and her husband or significant others in the, in jail, don't know what for, but she, you know, admitted, you know, meth, you know, meth is being the, the drug that she was using. I mean, it would seem to me, though, that, you know, it's not, we kind of know, we kind of think, and certainly not in every case, I get that, but again, you're trying to give us good empirical data, I get that, but to me, signs all point in direction, it's one of those things that you kind of know it, when you see it, you can, so, not in every case, you can't judge people just based upon what you think, but I, I've got to believe that when you look at the impacts on domestic violence, child abuse, and jail bookings, you were able to do jail bookings, that those correlations are there, and, you know, we don't just have to assume, but I think based upon what we know, and that getting to the core issues, you're gonna get to that in a moment, you know, some of the goals and recommendations, but without spending a lot more time this morning, but, and I don't know, again, it's one of those things where you try to dredge up information that others have gathered, or we try to get it from what we input, but I just gotta believe that what you do know, that you can track, that you relate that back then to families in distress, or, you know, children in, you know, in harm's way potentially and so forth, that methamphetamine is, is the drug of choice.
I think your judgment is reasonable, in part because of the science of what happens to the brain and what happens to people's behavior, the paranoia, the hallucination, the violent outburst, that is clearly demonstrably meth-related. And if you'll just look briefly, I won't spend any time on this slide because I want to pick up the tempo here, but if you just look at the, we did a survey, the, the work group in an attempt to get clarity, did a survey of our own clients in treatment, and we find that some 60% of them are involved with multiple systems. What that means is they're not just in drug treatment, they're in child abuse court, they're in criminal court, they've been involved with the jail, with the probation system. So that's what that means about multiple systems, and that tells you right there. So we're talking about over half, nearly two-thirds of the people we surveyed say they're involved with multiple systems. We included a few of their comments, just because we think it's important not to have a session like this without hearing from the actual people who are struggling with addiction and the pride they're taking in their recoveries. I'm not gonna read them to you, but they're quite moving. And making a point I think that you're getting at, that, that treatment for meth and policy around doing something on the meth issue is different from opioids and, and other drugs. We have documented changes as a result of use during pregnancy in the development of infants after birth. We know that it, that there's more recidivism after treatment for meth. We've talked about the fact that we can't change pharmacy behavior or prescribing behavior, those kinds of prevention options aren't there. Preventing meth addiction is about giving people alternatives in their life other than, than meth. And, and the most important one, I think, to, to draw your attention to, is the fact that unlike in, in the case of alcohol or opioids, there is no medicine to deal with it. In the case of alcohol and opioids, there is medicine that can reduce the craving, and there is medicine that can reduce the high that you get from using, and that's not the case in meth. This has got to be overcome by sheer will and determination and learning the skills to manage your life differently.
Okay, it's asking, Sherry, so the one number I didn't see in here, and maybe Dr. Ciceri or you have it, or somebody has it, what is the number of tox babies that are being born annually? And again, it wouldn't just be methamphetamine and maybe opioids or other prescription drugs. At one time, I know, a number of years ago now, we were, you know, we were 600 or more, so it was 50, it was about 50 a month, but what are we seeing, and I assume that that data's being collected, do we know how many?
I think we'll take that as a follow-up item, rather than just give a number off anybody's memory, we'll take that as a follow-up item and get back to you.
Because that goes to the multi-generational changes, that then you've got somebody who comes into this world that, you know, who knows, you know, they're given on the life expectancy that they may be having to cope with this beyond any introduction to it in, you know, in the youth or adult life, I just, I-
There is no question that, that the science, the brain science associated with meth shows that children born with positive toxicity for meth use during pregnancy, their dopamine receptors are changed in such a way that they actually become more susceptible to addiction themselves. So there is a multi-generational effect. The other, the last thing I want to say about why meth is different is that the treatment of it is actually harder. If, you know, if, if you're trying to teach somebody skills for managing their life without using, and they're paranoid, sometimes for a month or more after their last use, even into the period of abstinence, they're not gonna be building that trace relationship with their addiction counselor, they're gonna have short-term memory loss, they're not gonna remember what they learned at their last lesson, the actual treatment for meth is more difficult.
So, real quick, because you're on the slide titled, you know, why meth is different, I assume the upshot to all of this is that it is, it has got to be the most expensive, I mean, I don't want to sound cold about this or inhuman, but it's got to be the most expensive addiction out there for, for counties. I mean, you're, you're explaining that it has this incredible impact on systems, but you're also saying it's difficult to treat, and I assume that that has a proportional effect on the expense involved in treating meth as well.
I think that's a reasonable inference. I, I would agree with that. The action items we're suggesting are ones we've already talked about, more prompt access to residential treatment, and a lot longer after-care support after treatment for people who remember the, what it was like to be high. This is, this is not the kind of addiction that necessarily spawns well to a twice-a-week outpatient group system. I want to end by talking about the preparation we're making for the, what's called the ODS, Organized Delivery System Drug Medica waiver. We, when we talked about this in November, I was sort of pitching it to you, and I think the board's response was, don't talk to me yet about funding sources, talk to me about the problem. What is, what do we need in our community? Then we'll talk about the tools. Well, one of the things we've learned particularly from studying the meth problem is that we absolutely need more residential treatment, not having a waiting list and so forth, and this does appear to be our tool, our path to getting what we need in our community. One change since we last spoke about in November is that we have a deadline for submitting an implementation plan now. We are in phase, the phase-three group of counties, so we have a June deadline for submitting our implementation plan. It's kind of a weird system. You submit your implementation plan, and then the Department of Healthcare Services and the feds review it, and after you get it approved, then they give you a rate information. So you don't get your rates, your money, what is this gonna cost us until after you get your implementation plan approved. Obviously, this board of supervisors won't be asked to formally opt-in until both sets of information are available, not just implementation planning, but what does it cost, what are the matching requirements and so forth. Right now, there are 19 counties in California who are somewhere in the process of getting these two steps taken. Two of those counties have their rates so far, so they can say what this is gonna cost The advantages of opt-in, we're not gonna spend a long time on this today because there's, we're not asking you to take action, we'll take you, we'll ask you for action once we know what our plan is and what our rates are going to be. But the key here is that we would draw down federal money for residential treatment, recovery support services, including all that support after somebody gets, that reaches sobriety, and case management, helping you find, you know, keep your housing and so forth. All those things become federally reimbursable. So the, so in essence, the, the money you're putting in locally would be worth double its value. The downside, if there is one perhaps, is, is that the level of scrutiny and audits and accountability and paperwork and claim documentation goes way up, it becomes more like mental health in that sense, because it's a Medica funded set of services. And there will be some adjustment, I think. You know, somebody who's a terrific drug and alcohol provider, because they've, he's been there, you know, he's, he's a peer support, might not have the capacity, and we have to do some capacity building for all these audits and paperwork and accountability and scrutiny and so forth. The last thing I want to say about this waiver, however, is that I think we're gonna need it to make other things we're working on work. So for example, we're preparing to, to competitively seek no place like home funding for homeless individuals with mental, with mental illness. If that's gonna work, if these people are gonna stay in their homes and it's gonna be, it's really gonna prevent homelessness and recurrence of homelessness, we're gonna need the resident, more residential drug and alcohol treatment, because it's not just housing first, it's housing first and then support services. Similarly, I know there are people here today to talk about Proposition 47. Proposition 47 is not gonna work if we don't have this kind of treatment and support systems and case management and follow-up services available to us as red. So, so the other things that this board is on a path to committing itself to, won't work if we don't go here as well.
Phil, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
That's it.
All right. Well, thank you, this is extremely enlightening, very well done, and I appreciate all the time that you and so many others have put into this.
Thank you, I've learned a lot, too.
On the, on your last point, which is very well-taken in terms of the necessity to carefully assemble from different sources, different places, the resources we're gonna need to take the next step after now identifying clearly what the nature of the challenge is, the problem is. Has there been any conversation yet, and perhaps they were involved from day one, I just don't know, with, with Sutter on any of this in terms of their Getting to Zero initiative, and I don't know what you know about their, their commitment to help fund various initiatives intended to address homelessness, but in my conversations with representatives from Sutter, and I would imagine others on this board have had a similar experience, is that there is an ever-present interest in making sure that we are doing everything we can to effectively get folks from that, that would otherwise, you know, be a burden and impact their emergency rooms, to do something more effective for them and serve as a pressure-relief valve for the emergency room system. So if they're not at the table yet, in terms, especially in terms of this assemblage of funding, whether it's Prop. 47, maybe our general fund at some point, how it works with the implementation plan and the fiscal plan that you've identified, I think for me, the, what I'd like to see next, and I know we would obviously need to give staff time to, to think about this and bring it back to the board, is what is that, what does that assemblage really look like, and how much are we really thinking about at some point, making a decision up or down about resource allocation that I believe is probably gonna affect our general fund? I don't think I'm going out on a limb there, but it sounds like there's, what's, what's coming into focus here is a much more real identification of the steps, the timing, and kind of the overall budget for how we're going to, you have to now address the problem that's been, again, clearly identified here. So I'd like to hear your thoughts about that next step. Am I, am I off? Am I, am I daydreaming about this? Is it just a stream of consciousness thing, or is this something you're actually gonna try and do?
You're not, you're not dreaming, dreaming, and I would get credit where credit is due. I think Mr. Gill and Mr. Lake have established a clarity of expectation for all the staff of the various departments, that we have to braid these efforts together to make it work, right? So, so there's all kinds of collaborative planning and tasks that are, that Cindy Kavanaugh and homeless, and Ann Edwards and her department, and my public health folks and behavioral health folks, and even CPS and APS, there, there is an expectation with specific work plans and objectives and so forth, that, and an insight as a result, I think, among the professionals, that what I'm working on isn't gonna work if your part isn't there. And yes, there are funding implications.
What's the, what do we all think the conservative outside date is? Give me a month and a year of when you can come back to this board and, and give us the first progress report on what, you know, whatever we're gonna call it, our intervention on especially these two substances, opioids and methamphetamine? Is that hopefully sometime realistically spring of next year? When is that?
Uncharacteristically, I'm, I'm, my instinct is not to just think it up on the spot.
Okay.
I, I think I want to talk with staff and get you a substantive answer to your question, because I don't want to set a target and not mean it.
Is it 2020? Is it 2025? Is it 2019? What is it? I'm looking at nav now.
Surprised, sir, and I do need some time to talk to Sherry about what is a realistic deadline for her. Let us talk about, a little bit more about it. We've been talking about the programs, putting stuff in place.
Sure.
Once we had the conversation, we'll report back to you.
It's not to put you on the spot, it's, it's, what you're seeing in me is excitement, because this is, this is very, this is something we didn't have before. And, and you've, you've heard the questions and the comments for years now from, from the dais about their, our interest in these, these two substances in particular in terms of addiction afflicting this community, and I just feel very, almost empowered or armed, if you will, with the knowledge, and I'm obviously very eager to, to see how the next step progresses, but I do think at some point, just like other initiatives that we pursue here, we're gonna need to kind of understand the fiscal consequences and the, and the timeline for, for adoption and implementation.
Understood.
It might not be a, a one deadline either, it might be, you know, so, so the, the opioid task force might say, we can reduce the overlapping of these two kinds of prescriptions by December of 2000, whatever, 18, by 25%. That might be very different than, there will be no waiting list for meth addicts who are homeless, and who come to our triage center by this date. So I think we need, your point, I understand the overall point, which is, it's one thing to set quantitative targets, but it's another thing to put yourself on a timeline.
Yeah, but let me suggest, though, this, you're gonna be back to, in order to meet the deadline for this implementation plan under the, under one of the Medica initiatives, but I think, again, this crosses many different disciplines and lines, and we're talking about people in need and impacts to them, but certainly to the community. I would suggest then that, you know, give me, give some thought that for the point in time when we come back to, to budget in June, again, how this lines up, because it may take us right into the fiscal year next year, either for matches and/or considerations for this board, so I don't, again, supervisor, certainly way in and others as well, but it seemed to me that would give you time to kind of, not deliberate this, but to look at it, to set those practical targets, but also then, you know, give us some idea about, you know, what progress we're making based upon what our actions have already been taken, but what we anticipate. Again, Prop. 47 grant, these initiatives and others that will complement them, triage center and so forth. So I guess I would, we're gonna have a lot of information in the next six, eight to 12 weeks, and I guess I would suggest that no later than June, but maybe even before that, maybe as a prelim to, to budget, it doesn't, doesn't relate to budget, but I think from a standpoint of implementation and- and where we're going to be going with this in the years to come and how it's going to be made a priority within various departments. Does that sound, giving you enough time?
I believe so, but I need some time to think it through. I don't want to just on spot say, we'll have something for you. I would like to talk to Sheri, come back with a realistic timeline and say this is what we have.
Okay. I wasn't asking for next week. I was saying June. So I know there's.
I understand.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
I think what, in preparing this, we knew that this was a topic that the boards asked for a couple of years for us to bring forward, which we finally got the work done. And there is some excitement behind it. I, we do understand that. And we will work not, the only caution that I was trying to get at is that I just want to make sure that the dates that we're giving you are realistic. If there's a budgetary implication for 18, 19, we'll bring that, of course, in June. And if it's a long-term process, as Sheri's alluded to, we want to make sure that there's a placeholder for these items going to the future.
Okay.
I would just also suggest, you know, mark it by not just June, but also, it sounds like September, too, based on what I, what I heard in terms of final budget.
Okay. Very good. Any other comments? We've got a number of speakers. Certainly good, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheri, and, and Uma, and Dr. Kassari, and others who weighed in here. So let's go to our speakers. We want to take the ones that signed up for item 43 first, and then I'll allow those who signed up for item 13, which was the Prop 47 grant under consent calories, speak as well. So we'll start out with Greg Cox, followed by Dr. BJ Davis, and Nikki Nelson being the first three speakers.
Hello there.
Good morning.
My name's Greg Cox. I am the Program Director for River City Recovery Center. Want to thank Dr. Heller and her crew for coming out here and for, for working with us. We work with them on a daily basis. Want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. A lot of things were said today, a lot of good stuff. Couple of things I want to touch a point on. Definitely, when it comes to residential treatment, it, I'm a champion for it. I am a product myself of River City Recovery, former meth user for 20-plus years. In fact, I came in through the county of Sacramento back in 2005. And I can tell you treatment works. I'm, I'm, I'm an example of that. So are many others. The epidemic out there, the meth, the opiates, it's huge. It's, will we be able to touch everybody? No. But we, we definitely need to do more work in order to touch those out there. One of the things you were, you were touching on is the continuum of care. You know, we can treat them for the, for the 90 to 120 days in treatment, but we need to have more services available for the continuum of care out there. And whether it be education, employment, these kind of things. Because I can, you can take the drugs away and, and teach them how to cope without it. But if they don't have any other coping skills as far as employment, education, and these kind of things, I think it's very paramount that these things are addressed and, and looked at. Our hands are sort of tied in a lot of areas. Not a lot of funding out there for that. Resources are low. My counselors do an excellent job of trying to get them out there. But there's so many things going on, like Mather Community Campus is for one of them. You know, we can get them out there. But now the process has changed and it's, and it's more difficult to get a guy there after, or a woman there after, after 90 days of treatment. If it wasn't for my programs, mentorship program that we offer, some of the guys would just go right back out to the street. And that's unfortunate, you know. I know my counselors are diligent about getting these people out there from, from, from the beginning, from their first meeting. What is it you want to accomplish? Let's, let's, in the treatment planning process, you know, where are we going to go? What do you want to do? And it's difficult because 90 days isn't very long. That happens like that.
Greg, can I just ask, real quickly, the, so you mentioned Mather Community Campus, which was a transitional program. And it's, again, we've had some conversations in certainly recent weeks and over the last few months about that and about the, you know, clean and sober versus, you know, housing first and how folks enter into the program. And the design of that program and the way it functioned for nearly 20 years was, I think, as you described. I'm curious, so what, the difficulties now, so they go through River City Recovery, either out in, in Herald or somewhere else.
Yes.
And you have them ready. And then come the end of that 90 days, what's changed as relates, I don't, this is not Volunteers America focused, it's just about, you know, where we have transitional programs and, you know, federal funding streams have, you know, kind of gone in a different direction as it relates to homeless. But I mean, to the folks that you're working with, describe what's, what's changed. I guess just taking them up.
I could tell you it's more difficult now. I had a guy come in, 90 days. We started him on the, on the path to Mather Community Campus from, from day one, you know, and, and they have navigators now that, that navigate people through the system. He's been with us now six months. And we've been on the navigator, when can he come, when can he come, when can he come? And if it wasn't for our mentorship program, because funding stopped at 90 days, we now keep him as a resident mentor. He helps us with the newcomer and all that kind of stuff, at our, at our, at our cost. Nobody's paying for him to be there. It's been six months and the, and the young man has not gotten accepted into Mather. And it seems that we're getting a lot of runaround with that. I'm not quite sure what the holdup is. I know things continue to change and they can continue to implement new systems. But it seems to me, it's like, where are we going to go with this?
Okay.
I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, no, you did. And I just would look to Paul, and I think Paul's made a note of that because we've been having, talking about this, and we're going to have some, I would just encourage you over the, you know, as time permits, obviously in running a program, you've got, you know, other commitments. But
Sure.
Over the next few weeks, certainly coming back on March 21st, we're going to be talking about homelessness.
I'd love to.
Friage and so forth. But it relates to our emergency shelter grants and some of the other things, discussion about transitional clean and sober. And so I would encourage you, certainly offer any comments you might have about, you know, things you think could be improvement, but, you know, as well as suggested.
Absolutely. I'd like to bring a couple of staff members as well that really, my counselors are really in the trenches doing this work. They were the ones that, you know, they come to me with it. I try to take it to another level. It seems I get short-stopped. So to talk about the opiate and the meth epidemic, it's huge. And the statistics they were coming up with and which, which areas it's prevalent in, it's prevalent in all areas. I can tell you with my counties versus my Kaiser contract and everything, it, it affects everybody. I deal with a, a lot of guys now with the Suboxone and the Methadone. And we used to not allow that in our facility. We've opened the doors to that, you know, and it's working out. Somebody said something about the, the cost of whether meth was more costly. I think it was Mr. Serna's. I would beg to differ with the medically assisted treatment because I'm pretty sure that's a, a pretty costly effect. I'm not saying it doesn't work because it does. I've seen some, I've seen some success come out of there. But to say that the meth epidemic is more costly.
Well, I was talking about in a, in a holistic sense.
Right.
In terms of impact to the jail system.
Okay.
Impact to the emergency room system, impact CPS.
Yeah. I would have to agree with you on that. In fact, I'm, I'm a product of that as well. Like I said, 20 years plus of meth use. I celebrate 12 years this, this month of sobriety, continuous sobriety, mind you.
Congratulations.
And it all started at a place called River City Recovery, you know. And there's multiple places out there. But it does seem like we do need more resources out there. And I would, I would be a champion for that. I just met with a woman this morning who's a part of a, a, a street team that goes out. And she brought us a client this morning, which was awesome because he's coming straight from the street. And that's who I really want to touch. You know, we want to get to them. We want to, we want to talk about the river and all that stuff. If, if you give him 90 days of treatment and send him back to the river, what do you think's going to happen?
Right.
It's a no-brainer.
Thanks, Greg. It's my, folks. So I appreciate you being here this morning. Thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
And we'd like to have you continue to engage with us. So thank you very much. Okay, yeah. Okay, Dr. Davis, followed by Nikki Nelson, followed by Lynn Shu. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dr. BJ Davis. I know several of you. So I want to, I'm the Executive Director of Strategies for Change, which is probably the largest outpatient provider of drug and alcohol services in Sacramento. I want to thank Sheri and Uma and Lori for the presentation. I'm here in support of that. It was an incredibly comprehensive presentation, and she was on point in many different areas. I just wanted to provide some stats, just recent, to support the presentation. We actually, right now, have probably 250 open cases at Strategies for Change, adult cases. And we, I just ran numbers this morning. 35% of my open cases, their drug of choice was methamphetamine. 32% was alcohol and 20% was marijuana. So, and that's not necessarily what they're in treatment for, but that was their, their drug of choice. I think that to address the notion about homelessness that you asked, what would happen, Uma presented pretty well, what would happen to an individual that you identified that needed immediate service. Now, one of the things that you have to deal with is motivation to treatment. But the county's done a really good job of being very assertive about trying to get people into treatment. Now, what Sheri was talking about would be if you want to do it better and be more aggressive in it, you're going to need people other than just drug and alcohol counselors. You're going to need case managers. You know, you're going to need recovery support. What she was talking about, about the waiver, if, if that's what you're talking about, which is being more, more assertive in, in your outreach, then you're going to need to have to fund that type of additional service. I just wanted to point that out. You asked about the pregnant lady. There's a, a, a great program here in Sacramento County. Lori is very aggressive about getting people into that. It's for pregnant and parenting women. It's called Options for Recovery. It has a continuum that has, starts in residential, goes to intensive outpatient, and then has also a transitional at Mather. Now, I'm sure they could use more money because we could use more beds. But Sacramento's pretty good about, in fact, addressing specific issues. And they're very aggressive in that. So I wanted the board to know that. The other thing I wanted you to know was that as it relates to the waitlist for residential's, Sacramento's done something I don't think a lot of other people have done, prompted by, by your feedback to the county. And that is now, if, they are very, very aggressive about referring people to intensive outpatient that are on the waitlist. And so instead of just having them sit at home and continue to get loaded, they refer them to intensive outpatient, which is three hours a day, three days a week. And in fact, sometimes that works and individuals don't end up having to go to residential. But if they do, they can. And so they are very, very, very assertive about, about addressing that waitlist issue. The other thing I wanted to say was, is that Sheri was really very on point about the notion of, of people's having memories and quality of life. The issue is, is if you want people to get better and you want them to quit using drugs, then there has to be something other than just not getting loaded that motivates them to do that. And that's really about quality of life. The gentleman for River City just spoke about that. People have to have a reason to, they have to have a life that is not miserable sober and not hopeless. They need to have things to do, things to feel good about, that will motivate them to keep struggling with their memories and the things that prompted them to use to begin with. And then last, I want to close with, I've been providing treatment in Sacramento County for 20 years. I've been the Director of Strategies for Change since 2000, Clinical Director since 2006, Executive Director in the last year. I'm part of all the collaborative courts. I'm a professor. I lecture at UC Davis School of Medicine. And I just want to say that this administration is, is without a doubt the most aggressive, the most comprehensive, and the most committed to alcohol and drug services and co-occurring services that I have ever experienced. I just want the board to know that. I mean, they're at all the AOD Advisory Board meetings. They're in the collaborative courts. They address residential. They, they, they listen. I've been in the work groups. They are really, really, really aggressive about trying to get the data and, and respond to the, to the action items that you get them. I'm, I'm excited beyond belief because alcohol and drug has really taken a backseat for years. And I'm excited about this board, who seems to be very dedicated to, to addressing this issue. And I'm excited about the current administration at the, at the HHS.
Thank you.
They're really a committed group. And I just wanted you guys to hear that.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, for those. Again, they're, they're smiling and, and again, rightfully so. And thank you for your leadership and work with your program. And look forward to continue to good work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Nikki Nelson, followed by Lynn Shu, followed by Garrett Stenson.
Good morning, members of the board.
Good morning.
My name is Nikki Nelson-Rivas, and I am a Program Manager for Star, Bridges, the Stars program. And we provide case management for families that go through child protective services. And we are currently serving probably about 452 clients. And out of that number, about 50% of them, their drug of choice is methamphetamine. And around 30, 35% is opiates. I am also a recovery addict. I stand before you today with 14 years. Methamphetamine was my drug of choice.
Congratulations.
Absolutely brought me to my knees. Very grateful for county-funded programs because if it was not for the residential program that I went through, I would have never been able to afford it on my own. Treatment works. It absolutely works. When I got there, I had no skills, no coping skills, none of that stuff. And that's what they taught me. And as a couple of people have mentioned today, you definitely need something to replace what's being taken away. Currently working at Bridges right now. I am a part of the Early Intervention Family Drug Court. And I know that treatment works because what I get to see when I am assisting my recovery specialists with getting their parents into treatment, whether it be residential, whether it be outpatient, is the look on their children's eyes when they look at their parents and their parents have to tell them goodbye. And those little eyes fill up with tears and they don't understand what's going on. They don't understand why mommy or daddy are having to leave them. And on the flip side of that coin, what else I get to watch, which just reinstates how important it is that we continue to advocate for county funding for these treatment centers, is because when their parents come home, the joy and the happiness that those little ones have when they get to see mom and dad again. And to watch mom and dad actually implement and practice the tools that they've learned in treatment, like myself. Like I, you know, I gave two of my daughters away because I just, the disease of addiction had me. And, you know, when I returned, the joy that was in their eyes and just the ability that I had to be a parent because I didn't know how to be a parent. I didn't know how to get a job. I didn't know how to communicate. I didn't know none of that stuff. The only thing I did know how to do was get loaded, as a lot of our families that we serve today. And so I'm just here to advocate. Please give us more money. That lady, I think the implementation of having a triage center because we have a small window. And when those moms or those dads are ready to go, to be able to pick them up and get them in a detox or residential, it's crucial. It's really crucial. So I absolutely advocate. And I appreciate your guys' time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Thanks for sharing. Yeah, thanks to all of us spoken thus far. Certainly, we have some very strong partners out there and appreciate the passion which you serve, the folks that we're talking about here. Okay, next Lynn Shu, followed by Garrett Stenson, and then Janet Delman-Joe. Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Lynn Shu. I am the Clinic Director for Bart Programs, formerly known as By Valley Medical Clinic. We are a medically assisted treatment center. We offer methadone and buprenorphine for opiate addicted people. I was kind of looking at some numbers this morning. Looks like since the year of 2000, we've had over 5,000 admissions through our clinic. And if you take a look at those 5,000 people, and if they only affected three people in their lives, whether it's their children, like she was talking about, their parents, significant others, best friends, that comes out to around 9,000 people affected. We are one clinic. There are five clinics here in Sacramento, six in the Sacramento area. So take those numbers and times six, and that's what Uma was talking about, you know, only 10% are receiving treatment. And so there's a huge, oops, a huge amount of people out there still struggling in their addiction that don't have access to treatment. It was concerning when Dr. or Mr. Serna talked about having run into the woman who had the opiate problem and you were stuck and not knowing what to do. The, the positive thing about the opiate center, or the methadone treatment centers that we have here right now, you are not required to go through a referral service to come to treatment. Basically, type in methadone Sacramento, and the clinics will pop up and you can pick one. Most of the clinics are interested in, you know, immediate treatment, getting people in as soon as possible. When they come, you know, we're up on Monday through Friday for admissions. Most are. I think one clinic may be doing admissions on weekends. But most of them are Monday through Friday during work hours. People, if there's a walk-in, we'll try to get them in that day.
And there's, if I might interrupt, and there's no difference in that availability, whether you're homeless or not?
No, we have a lot of homeless people. So once people get on methadone and they, they're able to get treatment, they'll actually move to the area that their clinic's in. So it's not unusual for me to drive to work at 5:30 in the morning and I'm watching people go down our street. And I know them. I'm like, I know that one, I know that one, I know that one, I know that one. And they're coming to the clinic to get medically treated for their addiction. And so it's not just homeless. And the funny thing is, it's not that they were, because they're homeless and they have drug problems, they're coming in. One of our regular homeless guys was a nurse. They didn't They didn't start out homeless. They, they actually had jobs. They had careers. They're college educated people. They're people whose addiction brought them down, like the woman said, to her knees. And, and they, they ended up there. And so the thing that makes me sad is that there's such a lack of information that's open to the community. I, I, when I go down the highway, I go, why are there not billboards saying, if you have issues with these drugs, pills to heroin, here, make these phone calls, call here, get treatment immediately? You know, you can be homeless and be broke and get your medical, and it's covered. So no one's left out. It's just sad that people, like you said, don't know what to do. Where do we go? And, and it's really interesting when you get somebody sitting in front of you who you tell them, once you start the methadone and you get stabilized, you will no longer have to prostitute to get your money to go get your drugs. You'll no longer have to steal from your family to go get the money to get the drugs. You're no longer going to have to rob people's houses to get the money to get your drugs. And I say, you can wake up in the morning and not be in a complete and total panic. And they just break down in tears in front of me, full grown men, just start sobbing. And so the, for people to not know that there is relief out there is just, it's heartbreaking. So I just really want to continue, you know, with what we're doing with the Opiate Task Force. We've got a group of them, you know, working on trying to get a website set up for access for people to get information. It's very important. The other thing, as far as women who are opiate addicted and pregnant, they're our priority. If a woman who is opiate addicted goes into withdrawals, which they will do several times a day if they're out there shooting up heroin, they can lose the baby. And so it's very high risk for the baby to not be treated for the addiction with the opiates, because they'll miscarry. So we have a high priority. We have pregnancy programs. Many of the other clinics also have pregnancy programs. So if you know anybody who needs help, you just look at methadone, plug in your city, and you'll find a clinic and we'll, we'll get you in and get you treated. But I just wanted to share that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you for comments, too. Okay, next Garrett Stenson, Janet Dumont-Chell, and Heidi Samborn.
Hi, my name is Garrett Stenson. I'm the program director at Core Medical Clinic, which is also a buprenorphine and methadone treatment center here in midtown Sacramento. Just wanted to piggyback on a few things, specifically that BJ said, particularly about this administration. I think, you know, we're excited about the waitlist times going from 37 days to 27 days, but we're more excited about them, the effort that they've done to connect people into intensive outpatient treatment, or to methadone detox, or to those services while they're waiting. We, there's been a lot of talk about what we call an addiction field aha moment, when we're ready for treatment. And sometimes that is two hours, sometimes that's two days, but certainly it's not 30 to 60 days in most cases. So I really want to applaud the administration's efforts for taking advantage of that aha moment, also allowing some of the residential treatment program to run outpatient groups while they're on the waiting list, so they're allowed to go to the facility, see the other residents succeeding, stay engaged, so they're just not left out hanging to dry waiting on some waiting list. Two, you know, I, I'm up here in support of the Opiate Task Force and the ODS waiver as well, especially in the area of expanding medically assisted treatment and residential folks. We are in a heroin and opiate pill crisis epidemic in Sacramento County. There was 803 prescriptions written per thousand residents in Sacramento County in 2013 and 2014. Those are pretty wild numbers. 80% of the population technically could be covered. So it's something that, that is a problem here. And like Mr. Serna indicated, a lot of people and the prescribing changes, sometimes when hydrocodone, for instance, was rescheduled in October of 2014, there was a bunch of unintended consequences where people were switching to heroin because it was cheaper, because doctors were cutting them off the medicine. So it's a very, you know, complicated problem. Opiates literally affect every internal system that we have. We don't, you know, we perspirate different, we sleep different if we don't have opiates onboard. We, our bowel movements are going between, you know, extreme diarrhea and constipation. And we're sweating, we have bone and muscle aches, the physical withdrawal portion is brutal. Fortunately, we do have medications like methadone and buprenorphine that work to address those, similar to a diabetic has insulin. We obviously don't want to get to that point where we have to use these type of medicines long-term, but once we cross that line, unfortunately, it is what it is, and we need to treat the disease with what is effective. So again, just wanted to support the waivers, both the work groups, and applaud the administration for the work they're doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Garrett. Thanks for your work as well. Okay, Janet Dumont-Chell, and then Heidi Samborn. Those are the last two speakers on item 43. And then I have some folks that want to speak on item 13 related, so we'll call them next.
Hi, good morning. My name is Janet Dumont-Chell. I'm the pharmacist in charge at Sacramento State Student Health Services. And I'm also a member of the opioid task force. I sit on two of the work groups. I am on the drug disposal work group, and I am also on educating the medical community. And I strongly support the efforts of this task force. Since July of 2013, Sac State has been hosting a drug disposal bin, and we have collected close to 2,000 pounds of expired and unused pharmaceuticals. So according to the DEA, one pound of pharmaceuticals is about 500 pills. So we've collected, you know, close to a million pills and taken those off the street. And so, you know, with, with that knowledge, you know, we hope to expand sites, pharmacies that will host the collection bin, and also, you know, increase the efforts of, you know, law enforcement and other appropriate agencies in hosting drug tech, take-back events. The DEA is hosting an event on April 29th, and they also have another one generally scheduled sometime in October. And also, you know, with the task force, you know, we want to continue educating the medical community on drug abuse and diversion. And we hope to host, you know, town halls, seminars in the coming months, you know, to help with this effort. So, you know, again, I, you know, commend the efforts of the Department of Health and Human Services in hosting and this, this opioid task force, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janet.
I have a question before you leave. At Sac State, I know you have a drug disposal. Is it for people other than students?
Yes. And that's, you know, the, the actually kind of amazing part of it. We have the highest utilization from the, from the general community. You know, we do have our students and faculty that, that use it, but we get five to six to seven, you know, visits a day from, you know, just the, the general public.
Okay, thank you. I know when you go online and you look for drug disposal sites, there aren't very many.
Correct.
Yours being one, and a couple of people have asked me, in some places, you know, you have to be part of that community in order to dispose of drugs. And so they weren't sure about Sac State. So I'm glad to know that. Thank you.
Yes.
Good, thanks, Janet. Okay, Heidi Samborn, last one on this item, and then on the item 13, I'll have the clerk call, but it would be next Dee Emmert, Loretto, Paradello to follow, so.
I was going to say good morning, but I think it's good afternoon now.
Good afternoon.
Turn notes all in board members. And I want to thank Dr. Dumont-Chell. She's hosted one of our medicine bins, one of the first in the county, and she's done a great job. So thanks, Dr. Dumont-Chell. I'm Heidi Samborn, the executive director of the California Product Stewardship Council, and I'm also a resident of the county. And my comments are focused on the safe medicine and needle disposal as addressing these issues. We are a nonprofit, and we are a statewide leader in the policies and partnerships that lead to producer-funded and operated take-back programs, such as for needles and medicines. You might be familiar with the paint and the mattress program, and those are also policies that we helped pass here in California. But we have been doing a lot of work with medicines and needles over the last five to six years. We have installed eight of the 11 bins in the county, and we have a Don't Rush to Flush, Meds in the Bin We All Win program that's on the web. We've listed all the bins that are out there. People can find them by zip code. But that's really not that convenient when you consider we have 263 pharmacies in this county. So we've got a long way to go. We have worked for six years at the state level, trying to get a statewide program and working with the manufacturers to help fund and operate a program like they do in many other countries. And unfortunately, we've not been able to come to agreement yet, but we are still working on that. And so seven counties have not waited for a state solution, and they have passed ordinances where the drug companies actually do pay for the safe medicine and needle disposal. And they work. The ordinances are, provide a convenient collection program, and one that is sustainably funded and has a consistent PR message, so the public knows how to use it. And this isn't new. As I said, other, these drug companies do pay for these programs. And even Mexico, they have 4,400 pharmacies that collect medicines. Brazil, Colombia, and then most of Europe. Friend of mine was just in Portugal and found them there in their pharmacies. And the pharma industry did try last year to preempt local governments from doing these ordinances, and I would let you know that I think they're doing it again this year. So if you're interested in pursuing that, you may want to move on that, or at least watch the legislation that's coming in Sacramento. Safe medicine disposal does remove the medicines from the home. It was recommended by the President's Council on opioid addiction as one of the four key pillars to solving the problem. And 70% of kids do get their medicines that they start on their drug abuse path, apparently from home. People just don't understand how dangerous they are, and they don't know how to get rid of them. So I want to thank you for being ready to take action. And just a personal note, I live right on the edge of Carmichael, and in front of my home one day, I found this really beat up car. I see a young couple, and I looked in, and they were literally shooting up right in front of my house. And I, I actually knocked on the window, probably foolish of me, but I asked him, you know, do you need help? I'll try to get you help, but you can't sit in front of my house and do this. And he got out and started crying and said he's been addicted, he's been through rehab three times. And he started because he actually had a shoulder injury, was given 100 pills, and his friends taught him how to use alcohol with the pills, and that started him down the slippery slope. And they were literally getting high to get ready to go into church to ask grandma for more money to do more drugs. So this has become like really hard for all of us, I think, in the community to see. And then in midtown where I work, we're seeing people literally shooting up in front of the, the plate where we work, and then throwing them in the bushes. So I've had to actually build an entire structure under this stairway in the old Victorian, because they were coming under the stair every night and shooting up and finding needles every morning. So it really is a serious problem, and I really hope to help solve it with you. So thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Thanks for all your work as well. So Patrick Kennedy, yes, Mr. Kennedy.
I just wanted to, real quickly, to staff, you know, Superintendent Peters actually reminded me, and so I went online to look at our website as far as locations to drop off unwanted or unused drugs. And our own website is woefully out of date and not very useful, so you might want to take a look at that.
It'll be updated by five this afternoon?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Good to hear. Okay, thank you, Superintendent Kennedy. All right, then Flo, if you just would call 13 so we know if people comment on 47 or this item, just, again, we've already taken action on item 13, we had a few speakers, and so if you just.
Okay. Item 13, Authorization to Apply for Up to $6 Million in Proposition 47 Competitive Grant Funding from the Board of State and Community Corrections.
No, they may want to comment on this item as well, but they, some of them signed for 13, so we'll take this item in just a moment. So kind of jointly, I just wanted to be sure it was clear. Maybe it's not clear now, so I may make it, make it more confusing. But, okay, so we took action on that item. We're still going to act on item 43 here. And so Dee, if you want to come forward, that's okay, you can come forward. This may relate to what we're talking about here, and I think it did with some of the crossover, so.
Well, I've been impressed with how much it crosses over as well.
Okay.
I want to thank the board for this opportunity to speak to you. And I come today representing the Sacramento County Reinvestment Collaboration. It's a group of community-based organizations who are working to reform the criminal justice system and reinvest the savings back into the community. And so we're seeing a lot of overlap between Prop 47, which I want to thank all of you for, for voting to support that grant, but I also see a lot of overlap with number 43 here. I echo the previous comments regarding community engagement. I think that's critical when it comes to rehabilitation, treatment, and issues dealing with incarceration. There's a wealth of knowledge in our communities, and we've certainly heard from a lot of them today. I'm especially grateful to hear from the folks who are in recovery, who are working in this area, because I think they bring an insight that a lot of times the folks in suits don't have the, the same impact and understanding. And I know from working with my own stepson, that, that it doesn't matter how much the guy in the suit knows, he's not going to listen. But the guy that says, I've been there, I've done what you've been doing, and this is where I'm at now, that's somebody that speaks with authority. I can't emphasize more that in the future, we want to see more robust community engagement on important discussions like this. We want to get beyond the, the large agencies to the community-based organizations and the consumers. I also want to remind the board of some reinvestment opportunities that were found in our research and also by the researcher hired to review the criminal justice system. Most importantly, the establishment of pre-trial programs and greater leverage of split sentencing under AB 109. These are opportunities to spend less money on incarceration and more money on treatment and rehabilitation jobs programs and things like that. The recommendations in review would reduce incarceration to allow for the closing of a jail unit, which is the only way to really maximize savings in, in that system. I'm also seeing that we're really siloed, that funding makes it really hard to work together as a team, that, that we really need to draw together to work on things like rehab, but that sometimes, for instance, criminal justice funding doesn't support rehab, and yet it reduces the criminal justice costs. So we've got to find ways to, to get beyond the silos of who has the funding, to work together to address some of these issues. I want to reinforce a couple of the points that Dr. Heller made. The size of the need, the impact that has across areas, hospitals, incarceration, homelessness, jobs, requires cross-agency cooperation. The need for continuing support, not for 90 days, but for a long term, that probably can't be done in a formal residential setting, but can be done with peer counseling. And so the need to work with community organizations as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dee. Okay. Then Loretto, Paradella, and I believe it's Ami or Amy Bonjerry, and Danielle Williams, if some of those folks are still here. Good afternoon.
Good morning, Chair and Board. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I represent the Anti-Recitivism Coalition and Reinvestment Coalition. Today I'm speaking, and hopefully through my experience, shed some light upon some, some social issues concerning the nature of the population that is re-entering society. My name is Loretto Paradella, and I spent 18 years in prison. Upon re-entry into society, it was very difficult. Prior to my release, there was many programs that I went through to, to enable myself to be able to be paroled back into society. I was considered a lifer. Although I, I was involved in these programs, whether it be anger management, and all these numerous self-help organizations, I myself was a mentor in the mental health, in the mental health prison. And I worked together with doctors, clinicians, therapists, and I was a liaison between mental health inmates and, and certain programs that they had to go to. All these things helped me to develop social skills. But no matter what programs and what other jobs that I had, it didn't prepare me for what I was going to experience in, in the free world. Certain things that I went into, encountered, and only that I could explain is that after spending so long in prison, in a lengthy incarceration, that I was socially handicapped. And I seen a need for programs, programs that affected life skills. Imagine having to go into a bank and create a bank account and know nothing about it. Know nothing how to fill out a check, to apply for a credit card. There's certain life skills that people like myself that are getting re-entered into society that don't have. Some of them don't know that they have to get healthcare, that you're required to get healthcare. I remember when I started to apply for college, I felt out of place. There was no one to hold, and actually I needed someone to actually hold my hand, say, you need to do this, 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 step one, step two, A, B. There was no one there. I felt out of place. I felt I didn't belong. And at a point, I wanted to quit, but I didn't. I thought I didn't belong, and at a point, I wanted to quit, but I didn't. You're required also, when you go before the board, certain people are required to anger management. I was one of those people. Upon coming out here, there are stressors that you do not encounter while incarcerated, and I encountered those. Certain other things that I feel that are needed are substance abuse counseling, mental health counseling, job training, vocational training, and transitional housing. I hope that what I shared here sheds some light on certain social issues, on certain niches of society that are reentering out of being incarcerated for a long period of time. Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you. Okay, next is Ami, and then Danielle Williams, Daniel Silva, and Aldo Romero, last speakers I have. Good.
Good morning. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you today and to actually elaborate on what the speaker for the reinvestment organization talked about. After being, I'm a little nervous, after working so hard-
Been nervous?
For 20 years in the community-based organization, I would like to enforce actually the importance of community-based organizations in such collaboration with the drug and alcohol and health programs. It's very important. I work with, helped the People Foundation in Los Angeles for 20, 15 years, and that program was the most successful program because they work in collaboration with community-based organizations. The home visit these people do is so important, so vital, to everything that the drug and alcohol people do, and even to preventions and drug gangs and other programs, is very, very important. So I would truly, on behalf of every community organization, that you guys include these community-based organizations with everything that's been done, because they are very important. The simple fact is they work directly with communities, and they do home visits, a lot of home visits where they get in touch with these people who are suffering but are under a lot of stress due to lack of jobs or other hardships that they are going through. So when they communicate with them, they more or less have the support, they start looking at them as their friends, as their buddies, as their family members, to confine them to talk about issues that are really hindering any type of progress they are making towards quitting drug or any other program. So it's very, very important, and on that note, I will really hope that you guys will consider bringing the community-based organizations in this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ami. I would just say, I'll take the liberty when we're done here, passing your names, those of you who have spoken, on to our folks, so they'll have you as future contacts. Maybe they already know who you are, and you've been engaged, but I want to be sure we do that, so. Okay, this is Danielle. Danielle?
Hi, my name is Danielle Williams, and I'm an organizer with Sacramento Area Congregation Together. We represent over 52 congregations and 60,000 families over Sacramento County. And just want to echo the sentiments that are already expressed, and just want to say thank you to the county for reaping the benefits of Proposition 47. Thank you for staff for drafting up this proposal. We are excited that the county is moving forward. I do want to echo the comments around the community engagement piece, which is the one part that we did have concern about. The proposal states the establishment of an advisory committee consisting of behavioral health professionals, community organizations, faith-based organizations, et cetera, et cetera. And that committee is responsible for identifying the needs, identifying strategy and programs, and developing the actual grant by, now, the community wasn't invited to join that committee until last week. At that point, the proposal was completed. So as we were gathering community members to attend these hearings and to become a part, everyone was seeing that it was completed. And so just in terms of processes, we just want to emphasize the importance of including a broad array of community partners, and we are here to assist with that as well. And then I think there was a beautiful presentation this morning that really outlined what some of the needs are. We're also here to work with you in terms of how do we get that reinvestment from incarceration and putting it into the treatment. As Pastor Dee mentioned earlier, we had provided research maybe two months ago that spoke to some opportunities, and oddly enough, the researcher that you hired to do a review of your system said the same thing. So we would like to meet with each and every one of you to look into that further and to see how we can make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Okay, a couple of other speakers in to finalize this out, Danielle Silva, Danielle, and then Aldo Romero will be the last one on item 13. And then we'll get to some other items.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors. Once again, I come before you. I rather focus on what hasn't been spoken about. I really enjoyed this presentation here. I love the fact that things are moving forward to try and fix some of the major problems that have been plaguing not just this community, but most of the communities in California and throughout the nation. I speak from personal experience as far as being a juvenile offender myself, coming from that walk. I started about the age of 12. I know what it's like to be a young addict, a young gang member, and a young criminal that was out of control, angry, and in need of healing. At the time, I didn't recognize what set my life out of control, but I want to share that a lot of youth in this community and other communities are truly in need of assistance in the areas of healing, of intervention. A little focus should be placed on intervention to keep young people from going through the experiences that I had to endure for many years. From the age of 12 to the age of 18, I was in and out of juvenile halls, camps, and you name it, I was there, foster homes, out of control kid. At the age of 18, I found myself on a bus chained up with a life sentence, and I spent 39 long years of my life behind the walls. Today, through God's grace, I've been able to transform my life, and I'm out here in the community trying to help make a difference, and I too belong to the Anti-Racism Coalition. I also founded a program called Self-Awareness and Recovery Behind the Walls, which is the program that actually gave me a chance to transform my life and truly change. But it wasn't until I healed the core of my issues, which is my childhood situation, growing up without a father, enduring some dysfunctional family issues that set my life out of control. It wasn't until I found a program to help heal that that I was able to find true recovery. I went through many programs. I've gone through hundreds of 12 steps, domestic violence, you name it. I've been there. I got a stack of certificates for all that. But it wasn't until I healed the core of my issues that I was able to find forgiveness for myself, for the victims that I created, and through that process, I was able to forgive other people that wronged me, that caused my life to be set out of control. And I'm here to support intervention work for young people, and I hope you've heard me today. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle, for sharing once again. We appreciate you being here today, so. Okay, last speaker I have then is Aldo Romero.
Hello, my name is Aldo Romero.
Hi, Aldo.
I represent the Anti-Racism Coalition, SAR. I'm a facilitator. I'm part of the DAPL program that's called Peer Reentry Navigators, which assists people who come into society from prison, assisting them. But one of the things we found, I also worked at Terre Loma Residential till it was recently closed. I found out that there are not enough programs out here. We had people coming to our programs talking about, "I come out of prison, I can get into a program, but I live in the community, and I can't get into a program, and I'm drug addicted, and they're beating their children." Sacramento is right now one of the five hottest markets to live in, but how long will that last without community-based organizations and people that care or drug treatment facilities? I went through River City Recovery, great program. I've worked at drug places. I went back to prison, but these are things that people need to know, the resources to reach them. I mean, every board member here is to help the members of society. It's not a guy coming out of jail, because he's coming out of jail. He is a community member of Sacramento, but he can also become a positive member. Capital Christian Center, Victory Outreach, you have multiple drug transition centers, but they cost $450. How does a guy who makes $10 an hour afford a place to live? The place closed down, Terre Loma, and DAPL was paying for it, or they could pay $450. Now it's $13,000 a month. Where do they receive the funding from? How do they go and fight? Because what we're doing is we're fighting for our community. I came into this community, and I wanted to fight for a better place to live. It shouldn't be just you go live in Carmichael and it's beautiful, or you go live in North Natomas and it's beautiful, or you go live in certain parts. All of Sacramento is beautiful, but it needs help. Like they said, there's certain parts you go out there and people are shooting dope. You have co-occurring disorders, homeless people out there that have both drug addiction and they have mental disorders, and they're not being helped. You know, our community-based organizations really need the funding to come together, because it's great to have a transition home, but what happens when they leave those transition homes? Because yes, it does take two years to clear your mind, just like it took the King Stadium a while to be proposed and built and things like that. It's going to take time to build people up, but people are worth it. They are definitely worth it. There's a lot of people that you might see here that you can never tell their past lives, but I can guarantee you, somebody helped them along the way to become better people. Now, I would really urge this place, if they could, just to fund community-based organizations, or at least provide resources and consider them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aldo. Thank you for sharing. Thanks to all of our speakers, certainly those on item 43, as well as those on item 13. Again, a lot of crossover, but we understand certainly the community engagement part and our provider network. And with that, I want to thank our staff for the presentation. Any other comments by board members on this? And again, thanks for patience for folks in the audience. So with that, this is receiving file. You'll be back to us, though, I think, in-
Numerous occasions.
Numerous times, but with some of the requests and some information that was requested here today, so. Okay, thank you again to all, and that we will receive in file. We don't need a motion on that, do we, Flo?
No.
Okay. All right, with that, then, we're going to go to our next item.
Item 44?
Yeah, our 1015 item, so.
Okay.
And then we will get to, and we'll take item 46 before we close the morning as well, so.
Okay. Item 44 is the Alvarez Property Time Extension, a five-year extension of time for a vesting subdivision map for a property located in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is an addendum to prior negative declaration.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your county planning director. I do not have a PowerPoint on this item. This item was originally approved by the board back in 2008. There was a rezone along with the map and the associated permits. Due to the economic downturn, some of the development in the Vineyard Community has been very slow. There were a number of automatic extensions, and the applicant is now in requesting an additional five-year extension of this map. I did want to point out for the record that staff did do a small substantial compliance call on the map that is in the record and before you today, is that slightly revised substantial compliance call version of the map. This was heard by the Community Planning Advisory Council on October 4th of 2016. They recommended approval on a six-to-zero vote. It was heard by the Planning Commission on November 28th and recommended approval on a three-to-zero vote, and so the item is ready for your action today.
Okay. Would you just note this substantial compliance item, LeAnn?
Yes, it is. There's a before and after map in Attachment Six on Page Five. And one of the streets is modified into a small cul-de-sac, but there are multiple other through streets.
Okay. Lotting pattern stays the same?
Yes.
I mean, same, but same number of lots?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do you note that? Okay. Any questions of LeAnn? Brief staff report. Anyone here wish to speak? George? Yeah. On behalf of the applicant. Good afternoon.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. My name is George Carpenter, Vice President of Wynn Communities. We own this property through our investment company, Family Real Property, and I'm excited that on this property, we're in doing the improvement plans, and this is something that could actually go to construction maybe this year. I do want to give a shout out to Mike Penrose and the DOT team. The North Vineyard Station area has struggled with some significant traffic improvement triggers, and with the support of the Chair, we've been able to get around those, and there's 900 homes being slated for construction out there between what we have and what Lennar has. So thank you for your continued support. Be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions for George?
Thanks.
Good, thank you, George. Then, if nothing else, then I would move the staff report.
Second.
Okay. Move second then to move staff report recommendations on the environmental document as well as the extension of time in the vesting tentative map. And if nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Good. Thanks a lot. Thank you, LeAnn. Okay, the next item, item 46.
Item 46 is the Adams Residential Accessory Dwelling Appeal of the County Planning Commission. Approval of a use permit and special development permit for a property located at 7130 Beach Avenue in the Orangeville Community. The environmental determination is exempt.
Okay. And will testimony be required under oath, or no?
Yes.
Yeah, it will be, so maybe we ought to take that.
And we are, staff is actually not sure if we have a representative of the Community Planning Advisory Council here. They are the appellant. We are prepared to do the presentation, and we know we have the original applicant, Mr. Adams, as well as at least one of the neighbors here. Do we?
Yeah, we have some neighbors.
Oh, yes, we do. Great. You're Mr. Adams?
Yeah.
Okay.
Planning Advisory Council, is there anyone here?
Do we have someone from the Community Planning Advisory Council? It is somewhat unusual. We have tried to call them this morning. They are technically the appellant, but we do have a number of people here for the item, so my preference would be to go ahead and hear the item.
Okay, let me just turn.
Yeah, it's very unusual to go forward without the appellant. The CPAC is the appellant in this matter. I understand you've got people here.
Closer.
I understand you have people here.
Is it on? I don't know if your microphone's on.
Your microphone must not be on.
I'll be louder.
There you go.
I understand you have other people here to speak on this matter, but I don't think we've ever gone forward without the appellant, and technically, they should be here to present their case. If you want to listen to the people who are here, I think you can, but otherwise, I think your options are either to deny the appeal or continue the item.
Superintendent Frost, any? Well, again, I just think that's good advice. We certainly, we've got people waiting, we can take, I guess we can take some testimony under oath, but not to, I think for action, I think we wait to the appellant. If folks couldn't come back, I know, obviously, people have waited here for an hour, an hour or two, and I didn't know that we didn't have-
Right. We have tried to call this morning within the last hour and didn't reach anyone, so.
So we can either deny the appeal, or-
I mean, I suppose, I said, I don't think I've ever been faced with this before. This is very unusual. If you were in court, you would just not hear it. This is obviously different than that. But I would say you can refuse to consider it, if you like, and make a decision on that. If you want to hear people out, I suppose you can go ahead and take testimony, and if the board is prepared to make a decision without the CPAC here, I guess you can do that. The other option would be to continue it.
What's the, how does it work if we just deny the appeal, then it's approved?
Right, then the application would be approved.
Can we just hear the item without them here, or do we have to deny the appeal that way, or?
I think you're going to have trouble granting an appeal without the appellant here, but if you want to hear the item and see how things go, we can do that. It's that I've never had this happen before where an appellant has not shown, and we've nevertheless heard the item.
Let me just ask one other question procedurally, then. We've got, again, folks that are here that want to talk to, and we've tried to make contact, and we made contact with anybody from the CPAC, because again, we're going to be in session this afternoon, and again, I'm, you know, again, it's one thing to maybe hold it over for an hour or so and see if we can get people back for the 2:00 session and get somebody down here and make good use of it. I don't want, you know, make bad use of people's time, but people here have been waiting already, and so I don't know.
We can try again, and we can try all the CPAC members. We focused on trying to reach the Chair.
Yes. Again, I think in deference to folks that are here, both in, you know, in the- hold people over unnecessarily, but rather than have people go away and come back another time, if we can get a CPAC representative here, then I think it would be helpful.
So that would mean everyone would go get some lunch, and then come back at 2:00, and they would be first?
Yes.
You can do that. I mean, you can hear from the people who are here, if you like.
Okay.
Whether you can make a decision after that, I don't know if you'll have enough information without-
And then people would want to come back. If we didn't make a decision, obviously, those that are interested parties, either opposed or against, I mean, if we're talking about homeowners and property owners here, they're going to be very interested. So, to your point, so, pleasure of the board.
Should we hear them, since they're probably going to want to come back? If the CPAC does come at 2:00, they're probably going to want to be here to hear the rest of it, right?
Right. Well, absolutely, yeah. I think they would.
I think, holding it, then. Well, I don't know what to do. This is-
Maybe a show of hands, who would like to testify now, and who would like to testify to?
To wait and do it with the appellant here.
There's only one person here to testify?
No, we've got-
I want to wait until they fill in. I want the CPAC to-
Okay, so we have-
If they don't show up at 2:00, then where are we at?
I think that's not right. We don't show up.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Okay, I get it. So we asked for comments here, so we've got, so we've got folks, again, that would be very frustrated.
We have the original applicant-
Yes, I know, Mr. Adams.
And then we have two, at least two parties' concerned neighbors.
Okay.
Sir, the CPAC has drugged this out for a really long time here. This appeal was important. Somebody should have been here.
Yes. We're not disagreeing with that, but on the other hand, procedurally, if we're going to take action, we certainly need to at least see if we can't reach them. So I guess I'm going to suggest that in light of that, obviously, the frustration levels are here on, and again, I understand that. So I'm going to suggest that we hold this over to 2:00. We have the ability to hear it. If we choose to, I think council offers advice to this board, obviously, it's come up through various elements for appeal. We'll do our best to reach the Orangeville CPAC representatives, maybe start calling down the list, and, you know, either we have an explanation or somebody here, and we will hear this at 2:00. It'll be the first item. We will bump the other items till later in the afternoon. That's, I think, best we can do at this point in time.
We will go get on the phone.
Right. And I do think you'll need to give some thought as to what you want to do if you can't reach them and nobody shows up at 2:00.
Yes. Okay, well, we'll give some thought to that. We've got some, a little bit of time to think about that. So, all right, we're going to hold this item to 2:00 and reach out to the CPAC and come back in session, in open session at 2:00, because this concludes the morning calendar. We have a closed session, and we'll be back at 2:00 with this, with item 45 being the first one, 46 being the first one heard.
Favor.
Thanks. Sorry for the delay. Okay. Anything else we need to announce before we go into closed session?
No.
Okay. All right, we're going to reset into closed session and come back here at 2:00 with item 46 being the first item heard, and then we'll adjust the item accordingly.
Close session?
Yes, closed session. Yeah, closed session.
Closed session.
Closed session. Okay. Back at 2:00.